Recording in progress.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you all for coming. The August 2020-25 Favens ISD regular board meeting is called to order at 6:30. Let the minute show that all board members are present. Mr. Morales, could you do this one with flag of allegiance, please? Our vision statement: Working together, Favens ISD creates a positive and lasting impact through multiple learning opportunities. Our mission statement: All students of the district will be prepared to be successful, lifelong, global learners. First item on the agenda, superintendent updates. People participating, please. Sofia Maciel.
Good evening, President Estrada, Superintendent Dr. Segovia, board members and community. My name is Sofia Maciel. At this moment, we will be starting with the superintendent update. I believe the video is first to me, agents.
Welcome back Wildcats. This is going to be a great year for us.
Wildcats, welcome to the 2025-26 school year. On July 30th, we came together as one Favens ISD family for convocation. Dr. Laura Rizzo inspired us with the theme of transformation, reminded us that change is not only possible but necessary for growth. As we began the school year, we're ready to transform challenges into opportunities for our students. The first day of school was on August 5th, and it was full of excitement. Wildcats showed up with big smiles, new backpacks, and plenty of school spirit. From high fives at the bus stop to hugs in the hallways, it's clear. This year is off to a positively amazing start here at Favens ISD.
Say Wildcats!
Our mission at Favens Middle School is that we would have excellence in academics and character development.
Additionally, we were famous Cats. Thank you so much to KTSM, KINT, and KBIA for coming out, showing our amazing school pride.
I'm really excited to be here to represent Favens community as Teacher of the Year for Elementary.
I'm so excited just being here representing Favens ISD as their Secondary Teacher of the Year.
On August 16th, we proudly celebrated our Favens ISD Teachers of the Year at the Region 19 Award Ceremony. A nice round tree from O'Donnell Intermediate represented our elementary schools, and Diana Montes from Favens Middle School represented our secondary schools. They embody the passion, dedication, and pure excellence that makes a difference for Wildcats every day. Thank you, Mr. Aldaco, for taking a lot of that video during the first day. That was, you know, he's now an expert videographer. He's not going to be doing all the videos for us. So, as you saw, we began with a successful convocation that brought our staff together to celebrate the new year of learning, followed by, you know, strong first days of instruction across our campuses and our Teacher of Awards Ceremony, which was excellent. This evening, we would like to recognize several individuals and partners who have exceptionally made contributions to our district. We will begin with our Favens Middle School Convocation MCs. It's Rajon Sisoko, did I say Rajon? I'm sorry if I don't mess up your first name, it's your last name, Sisoko, right? And Celeste Delgado, Allison Ortiz could not join us, Isaiah Sanchez could not join us, and Sienna Sierra. These students represented their schools and our district with great pride and confidence. This time, I would like to invite our principal for Favens Middle School, Mr. Justin Kleist, to share a few words on their behalf.
Good evening, Dr. Segovia, Board President Estrada, members of the board and community. I have the honor of recognizing these students here today. And, you know, school's about academics. That's a huge part of it, but it's also about character development. And when we look at the character development of these young men and young women, I can say I had an actual proud, proud dad moment there at the convocation where I almost shed a tear. I don't say that I cried, I say my eyes were sweating, but when I saw them up there, I had a moment because they were amazing. And when you see the poise and professionalism and the fact that they could stand in front of hundreds of people and be able to talk in front of people like that, it's not easy, right? And to see that these kids did that is a testament to all the teachers in the district, right? Because from elementary to ODI, all the way up through middle school, everybody had a part in that. And a testament to the parents and the community as a whole. But I just want to say congratulations to you all. Thank you for what you guys do. And I'm so, so, so proud that you guys are students at Favens Middle School. So, you guys are awesome.
So first up, Rajon Sisoko. Celeste Delgado. And our stellar photographer, Sienna Sierra. Thank you so much, Mr. Kleist. Next, we recognize our Wildcat Band for their accomplishments during the Spring UIL State Competition. Their dedication, discipline, and talent have brought great recognition to Favens ISD. And we are very proud to celebrate all their achievements with you tonight. At this moment, I would like to ask our director, Mr. Miguel Soto, to come to the podium to say a few words.
Thank you, Ms. Maciel. Good evening, everybody. Board President, Dr. Segovia, members of the board, and Favens ISD community. So, I wanted to talk a little bit about overall. We were unable to come on a previous board meeting, so I'm going to kind of summarize everything that the band did last year. So, our band has always been more about the just competitions. It has been about serving our community and contributing to moments that matter. Our students were present at countless events, and they're probably participating in the inauguration of the Favens Fire Station, adding music to this historical event. The district convocation, always starting the school year with energy and pride. This year was countless TV live events, rallies, or sports send-offs with a drum line always available to make, you know, any moment unforgettable. Pep rallies, football games, let's not forget the homecoming parade, the Christmas parade, the Favens ISD Fall Fest, concert performances across our campuses, creating smiles and inspiring young students to join the band one day. The band participated also in the Battle of the Schools fundraiser at Chick-fil-A Eastlake against Clint, where they represented the Favens with energy and enthusiasm. And one of our annual events that fills our students with great pride is a Veterans Day ceremony, where they help honor those who have served our nation. And let's not forget the Special Olympics as well, where with music, they celebrate some of the most inspiring students of our district. So, each of these events demonstrate the power of music to bring our community together, and our students played a key role in making this possible. And now to the achievements, music and academic alongside their service to the community. Our students also set a new standard of excellence in their performances. Last year, they earned a Division One rating at the EPIAZ Marching Invitational. In the past, they always start with that contest, and they always got twos, threes. But last year, we got Division Ones, took third place. And the Socorro ISD Marching Invitational, for the second time, they advanced to finals where they got third place. That's incredible. Had seven students advance to area auditions. Celebrated Klyrenet student Azul Ratamosa's achievement to advancing to the Texas State All-State Band, which is here present. We had 13 students qualify for the State Soul and Ensemble Contest. Among both of them here are present as well. But something that's unprecedented that I wanted to mention was that at the last year's UIL Concert Band Insight Reading Evaluation, where students perform prepared pieces, and then they proceed to learn a piece of music that they've never seen before, and they have to demonstrate their knowledge, their fundamentals, and everything they studied. Among all the four A high school bands, Austin, Bowie, Irvin, Riverside, Isleta, Mountain View, San Elizario, Clint, our Favens High School Band earned the highest scores among all of them. And this is unprecedented, our fathers and children. So, we have bragging rights. There's, and then other schools that sight-read the same piece that we studied, we actually were one of the top in the whole city, so I'm really proud of them. And that's never happened before. And then to conclude the achievements, for the very first time in Favens ISD history, every music program, Mariachi, middle school band, high school band, earned Division One ratings at their spring semester UIL competitions. So, that's never happened before. And I just want to read one more thing, I promise. The success of our band is truly a team effort. I want to thank our teachers, their support and guidance, our administrators, the leadership of our board members, the encouragement of the media in sharing their story, especially to you, Ms. Maciel. Thank you so much. And of course, the parents. We can't do anything without our parents bringing them to school. So, I'm eternally grateful. And representing the band here, I have our this year's drum majors. Head drum major is Ramon Longoria, assistant drum major is Azul Ratamosa, and I want to call them to be recognized. Thank you.
And last but not least, we wish to acknowledge one of our valued community partners, Sabrositos. Mr. Steve Ornelas is here with us today. Thank you so much for coming. We actually went to try the drink that we're going to discuss, and it's right there for you. Well, when I say "we," it was the superintendent's because at the moment, I cannot, and yeah, so. We'll definitely be making more purchases of that. And so, Mr. Ornelas and Sabrositos have supported our district through efforts such as ODI Night, where they donated a portion of their proceeds back to our schools. They've also created the Golden Wildcat Drink, which you, you know, you saw in the graphic. And $1 from every single one that is purchased contributes to a scholarship for one of our graduating seniors. This commitment to our community reflects the strong partnerships that help us succeed. So, thank you so much, Mr.? On behalf of Favens ISD?
Thank you. Do we have anybody sign up for open forum? At this time, we'll give the communication of visitors. Next item on the agendas are consent agenda presented by Dr. Rohana Segovia.
Good evening, President Estrada, board trustees, and community and colleagues. The administration recommends approval of the consent agenda items as presented in your board book.
Do we have a motion to approve?
To return. Can we pull out item I for discussion? This is the last item. Texas Education Agency Maximum Class Size Waiver.
I would like to pull the item E as well, just to get a little more information on that as well. I love to read with McDonald's reading initiative.
Any other discussion or question? Do we have a motion to approve everything except E and I? We have a motion by Mr. Spence.
Second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Flores. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
So, is it fair to start with the McDonald's piece? Is that okay? Good evening, board member, board members, Board President, Mr. Estrada, Dr. Segovia, and Wildcat trustees. So, we were, McDonald's has a program currently that they're looking to initiate this upcoming semester, and it's titled the "I Love to Read with McDonald's Reading Program." And if you look at the front sheet here, I just laid out some of the major bullet points from their plan of action that they're looking to execute, especially with small and rural school districts here throughout El Paso. And so, the main objective of their program is to get kids to fall in love with literacy or to continue to love literacy. And so, it is a program designed for K-3 students. And the objective really is to get students in Kinder to Third to read one book per week. That's their mission. And so, the way that they're looking to do this is to offer some incentives to encourage the love of reading for our students. And they're looking to launch this program mid-September, all the way to the 7th of December. And they are, in our last conversation that they had with us, they are going to set up a meeting with Dr. Segovia and our team here just to launch off the logistics and the coordination pieces of it, which they're working out through, they'll start working out through right now. But through the incentivization, they are looking to provide our campuses with, our Favens Elementary and O'Donnell Intermediate with free ice cream cone coupons, free four-piece chicken nuggets and hamburger coupons, $100 for each school to hold a celebration right at the four-week marker, just to ensure that kids are, you know, continue to build their energy. And each participating school will receive $1,000 to purchase grade-level books for their kids, right? So, that's a, it's a big investment. Banners and posters are going to also be supplied by McDonald's and their partner, who's going to be launching this initiative. And so, the whole idea is, the goal is to read one book per week, right, for eight weeks. And so, once students complete the program, there'll be a final recognition party that'll be hosted by McDonald's, where McDonald's characters, news anchors, there's also a big social media push and media, and local news media push on behalf of McDonald's to gain recognition for kids and the community. And the whole idea is to award certificates of completions for those kids that complete the eight weeks, the one book per week, and give them two free books if they are able to keep tabs and make sure that they do their reading. Additional prizes are going to be, so, once they, once all the kids that do complete the eight weeks and do their one book per reading, names will be put into a sweepstakes. And in that sweepstakes, two students are going to be selected to get a McDonald's family party. Up to eight members of their family will, McDonald's is going to host a family party for them. So, it's pretty exciting, and then they're also going to be giving away two bicycles to two other students. So, the whole idea is to, again, embrace reading and embrace literacy and celebrate, celebrate reading for our kids. And that's going to be, that's really the gist of what their program is going to entail. Any questions on this?
I just wanted to get information on.
Yeah, yeah, I'm excited. You know, it's a good thing for kids, and it's a good thing for our schools, especially as reading. You know, it's fundamental at the early grades, right? So, it'll be fun. And principals have been also notified of this project. And once it launches off and they get us all in a room and share with us what the guidelines will be, we'll continue to share that information with you. Any other questions? All right. And so, I think the other item that was pulled was the four, four I, correct?
Yes.
Yes.
All right, and that has to do with maximum class size exceptions. We currently do have two classrooms, two kindergarten class sections at FES that are, that are past the 22-to-1 racial, teacher-to-student racial. And so, in communication with our school principal, Ms. Brashear, we are, we are going to be, after Labor Day, we are going to be seeing if those numbers remain, right? And so, we do have a plan of action there, and one of them is to proceed with a waiver so that the classrooms can stay intact, right? And so, one of the classrooms does have, does have a 23-to-1 racial. The other classroom does have a 24-to-1 racial. So, if this waiver is granted, right, we will, we will then make sure that all notification to parents is made and that all communication to our state is made, as well as they get our waiver and see if they'll grant us that opportunity to have these ratios in our schools.
I have some questions, Dr. Aldaco. The ratio for kindergarten-student ratio is 1 to 12, right?
Yes, sir.
I'm sorry.
1 to 22.
1 to 22.
Pre-K, pre-K is 1 to 11, but starting in Kinder is 1 to 22 all the way to fourth grade.
1 to 22.
Yes, sir.
You said 12.
Because I made some findings here, that yes, the maximum class size for kindergarten is 24 students, but the student-to-teacher ratio is 1 to 12, right?
1 to 22.
No, sir. The state allows the ratio to be 1 to 22 from Kinder all the way to fourth grade. There is no racial requirement after that. In pre-K, there is a requirement to have a 1 to 11 ratio in pre-K. And you could accomplish that by having two adults in the classroom. So, you could still have a 1 to 22, but you do need to have two teachers, or a teacher and an aide in pre-K. But in, starting in Kinder, it's 1 to 22.
Some concern about the students, you know, having more than 20, 20, 20 kids, and especially Kinder, in one classroom or one teacher, I think she really needs help. And not because of the teacher, but the students, you know, the attention that has to be there, you know, for the students. That's, that's, that's my, 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 you know, I'm pretty concerned about that.
Sure.
About their learning, you know, because they're, it's the foundation of their education there. And if we have just one aide for this 80-something pre-K students that we have for classes, I mean, I think it's unacceptable. I think they really, these kids need more, more, more than that, and they deserve more than that. And they deserve more than that. And I mean, my, my, my thinking is, I, it's unacceptable. And we need to do something about it. And I, I'm, I'm, I understand that we, we, we have constraint on our budget and all that, but what about, I mean, we can go in there and, and find something, you know, that we can put in place for these kids.
Yes, sir, it will definitely ensure that we meet with the principals so that the teachers do receive the support as we wait till, probably, uh, after Labor Day to see if the numbers hold. Uh, if they do hold, we need to begin to see if there's any strategic staffing that we could consider. We can't promise that because we don't know if we have any other moves that we can make. But in the meantime, uh, to be compliant with, uh, with the rules and the law, we do need to submit for the waiver. Yes, sir.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Cause I think that, um, if we started that from the beginning of the year, I think they should've had an aide for each class because, as it is kindergarten, it's a very, it's hard with the young kids. And I think, uh, they should have, if, I'm sure they have aides in other, in the other classrooms. You know, but right now we're hurting with this class. I think that's where they should have the aides to help this teacher out. Why do we wanna get the teacher overwhelmed?
And that is part of our next move, our strategy. So after Labor Day, we're gonna be reassessing, right? To ensure that if the classes do stay the same, then we will reassess and there is a plan to ensure that those teachers do receive extra support.
So is that like a, what, it's a whole month till September?
So, so we will talk to the principal to ensure that we do provide the supports that we can support. We are, uh, unfortunately in a budget constraint situation, so we don't have, uh, the luxury to have, to hire an aide for each teacher. Uh, but we definitely will provide supports as we wait, see if the numbers hold. If they do hold, we'll have to look to see if we could have some sort of strategic move. Uh, at this point, uh, the elementary is already right-sized. So internally at that school, they can't make any more teacher moves. So we'll have to look at other schools to see who has certifications and also to see if their counts, uh, allow to make moves, right? And so if we don't have any of that, then we, we could consider, uh, possibly hiring a, an additional teacher, right? But that's why we wait a little bit to ensure that, um, that the numbers, uh, hold before we, before we hire.
Another, sorry, another thing, um, so then, in the classrooms that have the regular, normal sizes, there's aides in those?
No, they have, they have a team of.
So nobody has an aide right now?
No, my understanding, they're rotating aides at this point, but we don't have an aide per teacher.
Oh, okay. No, I was just saying, well, um, if these are the only classes that have the, the more kids, why are the aides in there?
Well, there's something that we could talk to the principal about to ensure that there, we do have a rotation there. Yeah.
Just to, to answer you, Julian, uh, Mr. Morales, it's the beginning of the school year. Enrollment is fluctuating, some drop, some enroll. It's too early to make or assume. If we assume to hire new people and we don't get enough kids, then what's gonna happen, we're gonna have to close that section anyways. So that's what they're doing, they're waiting to see what happens with our numbers. And that's what a lot of the schools do, other districts do, because they drop every day or they enroll every day.
But up to now, I hope we haven't dropped, right? Which we hope we don't. I, I was just saying, because, um, we have to see, we also have to see, you know, there's, okay, we might think it's two more students, but it's kindergarten. You know, those little kids, you know, they up and around, you know? And if we were thinking that we're okay, we're over, we're overpopulated in this class, you know, come on, let's think, let's put the help with these teachers before these teachers get overwhelmed. That's my point of view, but, you know, I really appreciate, sir, that you say that you're gonna try to work something out. And it's two more weeks, I guess, before September the 2nd.
We'll, uh, like I said, we'll meet with the principal to ensure that the teacher, we provide the support as we, as we wait, uh, to ensure that either the numbers hold or not, right? It's a good thing if they hold, you know, but it does create other situations that we have to address. Uh, and we'll, we'll, we'll look at it as, as soon as that mark hits to see, uh, and we, we might get more students and, and we might have other sections that we have to consider, so. Um, like Mr. Nella said, it's a fluctuation matter right now. We, we are getting kids that are leaving, kids that are coming in, so.
Okay, thank you, sir.
Thank you.
And the other thing that has to be taken into consideration is if we're in compliance, we're in compliance. Uh, we all have a different point of view, and I feel for the teachers. That's why I run for, I ran for the board. But if we're in compliance, we're in compliance. Uh, for Dr. Segovia and Mr. Adaco, they inherited these issues because these issues have been trickling down year after year after year. That's why we are overstacked. We are in the deficit that we are in. So we, all that plays into the role.
Yeah, but we need to, uh, still look into the education of our kids.
I understand.
Foundation is the start of their education years, and if they start good, they'll finish good.
I understand.
Bottom line.
But when, when you don't have the funds, how are you gonna do it?
Well, probably.
Just, just a simple thing. If all our buildings have been maintained year after year like they were supposed to, we wouldn't be in the situation that we're in. And we probably wouldn't be in the deficit that we're in. That's all I can say. It's either we, we gained somewhere, we lose somewhere else. So you have to decide which one has more weight.
I'm pretty sure we have people that we can move around. I'm pretty sure.
And that's what we're looking at, to see if by September, the numbers hold, do we have any other moves? Now, the move is a strategic move. First, do we have sections that are low that we could get a teacher from? And the other thing is the teacher needs to have the certification. Because if we don't have that combination, then we don't have a move.
Or any other aide that, that is available throughout the campus.
Yeah, in terms of aides, we could, we could look at that as well. So there's still some things that we could do. Uh, and in the meantime, we will provide support for the teachers. Uh, this is, this is the reality that we're facing at this point.
And it is something that is on our radar and our communication with our school principal, Ms. Brashear, has been ongoing regarding this matter and, uh, completely agree and understand that the support is needed. But we're there, we'll, we'll make sure that the educational part isn't hindered.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Adaco.
Thank you. Thank you.
So at this time, do we have a motion to approve item E and I?
I'll make the motion.
Mr. Flores makes the motion, do we have a second?
Second.
And Mr. Nella? Okay, we now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, thank you. Next item on the agenda, 2025-2026 New Hires, presented by Ms. Aidé Polanco, Director of Human Resources.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Estrada, uh, Superintendent, Dr. Segovia, Board of Trustees and Community. My name is Aidé Polanco, and I would like to introduce our new hires for this month. We will go ahead and start off with Mr. Noe Avila, Instructional Aide at O'Donnell Intermediate School. Mr. Adrian Esparsa, Diagnostician for Special Education. Ms. Lucia García, Teacher Resident at O'Donnell Intermediate School. Ms. Lizeth Ibarra Varentos, also Teacher Resident at Fabian's Elementary School, and I believe she was not able to attend this night. Ms. Judith Moreno, Teacher Resident at Fabian's Elementary School. Ms. Emmy Ortiz, Instructional Aide at Fabian's Elementary School. Thank you, and those are all the new hires for this one.
Next item on the agenda, Fabian's ISD Title 1 Annual Meeting, Every Student Succeeds Act, ESSA and Federal Grants Presentation, presented by Dr. Galavies.
Good evening, uh, Board President Estrada, uh, Dr. Segovia and members of the board. My name is April Galavies, and I'm gonna give you a federal grants presentation. So I wanna start off by giving you a grant overview. So today we'll cover the ESSA, which is part of the Title 1 Compliance. Oh, am I supposed to be? Okay. And then the SPED Consolidated Grant, and we'll have our CT Perkins Grant, the Lasso Cycle 2 Grant, and then we have the Safe Cycle Grant for Cycle 1, Cycle 2, um, the Prospective COPS Grant. And then, um, we did have a request to review the T-Class Grant Decision 9C, um, which was right after COVID. Okay, so the purpose of the Every Student Succeeds Act is for us to be able to provide an equal education opportunity. So in closing the gaps, we get all our special population data, right? And as we analyze our special population data, that is what we're supposed to be using to allocate our funding in the ESSA application, the Every Student Succeeds Act. So I know you have heard, we started off with first the freeze in our federal grants, right? Now they've been released. There is a reduction in the grant amounts quite a bit, actually. I know that you have all attended, um, a workshop with Ms. Yunus, and she went over the reduction amounts. But these here that you see, these are our ESSA entitlements for this school year. We did get revised planning amounts, and I'll go over these later on in, in some of those slides. So they did reduce even further, um, not by much, but they did reduce. So we have a total of over 2 million in the ESSA grant application. So I'll go over the assurances first, for Title 1 Improving Basic Programs. We do have to set aside a minimum of 1% for parent and family engagement activities. We do have to establish a parent policy and meaningful consultation with parents, uh, the Parent School Compact. And then we also have to have McKinney Vental Reservation Funds, okay? So we, we, um, do have, uh, ESSA, a Shared Service Agreement with Region 19 for the McKinney Vental Grant, but aside from that grant, we need to have our own reservation funds in our Title 1 application. And I'll go over some of the things that we purchased for our McKinney Vental students. Uh, next, we have the Title 1 Annual Plan, and then the Title 1 Annual Meeting. So our principals, um, we provide them with a template, and they go over all these requirements during, um, our open house. And then again, during Parent-Teacher Conference in the spring. Okay, so we do have a charge for administrative services, right? To each grant, which is our indirect cost. So you'll see that there is a 91,000, those go back into our general fund. And then the rest of the money is allocated within the grant. We have a huge portion of money that is used for Title 1 funding, right? Some of our teachers that were not necessarily budgeted in 199 are in our Fund 211 currently. Um, all our instructional facilitators, which are supplemental at each campus, are included in here, our district social worker, and then our at-risk coordinator. We do reserve some funds for our parent trainings, our professional development, and then we have supplies and materials, which is additional parent and fam- family engagement activities that we buy them books or any supplies, and then any teacher softwares that we use. Um, and other costs for the homeless reservation funds, we can purchase school uniforms, um, PE uniforms, band uniforms, school supplies. And, and we did that at the beginning of the school year. And then any other parent and family engagement activities related to McKinney Vental. So I did include, like, a whole breakdown, I won't go over each expense, right? Um, but just so that you can see from last grant cycle, because grants run October 1st through now. Um, I did want you to have an example, what are some of the things that we purchased? Uh, and I'll go over a few, like, 806 Technologies is actually the platform that hosts our Improvement Plan and our Title 1, um, Compliance. Then we have our communities and schools, which were, um, the coordinators that were at each campus, and they were fulfilling our parent and family engagement activities. And then you'll see some reimbursements there, like for Sam's Club, because we do buy snacks or food for our parent meetings, some, some books that we give out to parents. Alright, that's all. I'll keep going, but at the end you can come back and just ask me to review. Then we have Title 1 Part C, which is our migrant program. The assurances for this one is really a needs assessment just within this grant. So we really wanna recruit all eligible families. As soon as their qualifying move expires, we try to help them obtain work so that we can, um, have them receive services still. And then we have college readiness activities for them in the summer, the summer bridge programs. And then we do provide the math and reading support for the students. And a bright beginning, that is when we have our younger students, like our three, four-year-olds, who the parent just doesn't wanna take them to Head Start, then we have to offer services there. So our, our migrant specialist will coordinate some time to go and tutor the child. So this one reduced quite a bit, right, um, from our previous grant. So we've allocated about 48,000 for the salary of the migrant specialists and any extra duty pay that we'll have to use, um, to fulfill some of these bridge camps. We do have a healthy carryover from this school year, so that is how we will be able to fund some of these activities in the spring. Um, and then we have parent conferences, registration and training locally. Like, today I saw one, and Region 19 is actually doing them for free, which is helping us because before, uh, they were charging. So we'll just worry about, um, paying for transportation. Um, we do have a migrant van though, so we, we tend to use that. And then supplies and materials, so since our migrant specialist does a lot of canvassing, he'll use, like, our poster maker, um, business cards or things to help promote the program and himself, so that the parents get to know him. And then on other costs, we do allocate at least, um, a thousand dollars or even a little more if we can, um, for our migrant specialist to go and get the training. However, we've been encouraging them to present at the conference so that they can help us pay. And that's what he's been doing, he presented at the national conference. Alright. Okay, here, I have listed all the expenses for 212 as well. I won't go into depth to each one, but if you have questions. Uh, we do also provide eyewear for the kids, so if you see there, like, Dr. Victor Ramirez, it's because if the kid needs glasses, then we go ahead and provide the, the glasses. Then we have Title 2 Part A. Okay, so this is the, the grant that reduced the most this year. And it's for profi- professional development, recruitment and retention efforts. So our teachers, if they have secondary math, secondary science, like the areas of need, dual credit, we do provide them stipends, and this is a grant that we would use to provide stipends. Usually at the beginning of the year or towards the end of the year, um, we spend about 110,000 just in stipends for teachers. And this year we only have 60,000, so we will have to, um, work with finance, with Ms. Yunus, to see. with Ms. Nunes, to see how we can use some local funding to be able to pay for these stipends. And then our contracted services, we've allocated $3,561. Luckily, from this past grant cycle, we had money left, so we were able to renew all the softwares for this school year. And then we didn't allocate any money for training, I mean, for travel. All right, so this one's a lot shorter, because like I said, it's stipends, and I didn't put payroll on here, transactions. A lot of it is just training. Okay, Title III Part A, this is our ELA Grant. This is still a healthy grant, we're still receiving quite a bit of funding. So we allocate about $50,000, because our kinder, no, pre-K through first, we have to have them in a bridge program for emergent bilingual. We do that throughout the year, it's 120 hours. So they'll do the first set of hours during October intercession, and then spring intercession, and then lastly, summer. Contracted services, we only have $1,500, but just how I mentioned, we had quite a bit of funding left over from this year. So what we did is we used this year's funding to renew all our softwares for this school year. So in July, we renewed everything, so we're good with our material. And then we do reserve some funding for parent outreach, because that's a requirement for Title III, that we have to have parent and family engagement meetings. To save money, what we did is that Ms. Flores will be working with the migrant specialist. That way, we use the same group of parents, and we can share the cost between the migrant funding and the emergent bilingual funding. All right, so these are the expenses. Next, we have Title IV Part A, and this is for well-rounded education, which is our students who do early college, we pay for their tuition. The safe and healthy students, depending on what the goals are for that school year. But usually, in the past, we would fund like PBIS. This year, we have our own methods to be tracking PBIS, but we're still paying for like the counseling software, the counseling curriculum that our counselors are using, anything that we distribute through Red Ribbon Week textbooks, digital textbooks, the students will come with either Ms. Terry or Ms. Murbel, and we'll pay for their books. So anything related to social-emotional learning, which is safe and healthy, anything related to dual credit, their tuition, and books. And then we do reserve, because we don't have a leave counselor, and we want to stay up to date, we do reserve quite a bit of funding for the training for counselors. These are all our expenses. If you see that it says TIB, that means textbooks, that's the textbooks that we bought. Okay, so for ESSA, some of them are statutorily required for us to review during the district improvement team. We review all of them, just because since we include it in the plan, and we tie the funding to the expense, we just go over all of them, even the ones that say strongly recommended. Okay, so this is a depressing news. So I started off with the $1,673, then we got our notice of grants, right? Then a couple of days later, they send us the revised amount, so they even reduced a little bit further. So we'll work off of this grant application, but as soon as they open it up again, then I'll have to amend the grant, and in areas most likely like supplies and materials, I'll have to reduce it to the new amount. All right. Okay, then next we have our SPED Consolidated Grant. So our SPED Consolidated Grant is divided in two. We have for the students who are non-early childhood, and then the students who are early childhood. Our students who go through the child find, and just like to explain, child find is usually our younger kids, like three- to four-year-olds who have disabilities. Usually the doctor, someone will refer them to services, and then that's how they come to school at age three. So under Fund 225, we have some funding there. It's very little, like $9,000, but that's what your early childhood special ed classes use for supplemental funding. And then for 224, that's all our other special education. This one too, the transaction report, if you look at it, it's mostly services, beach, OT, physical therapy, payment for assessments, diagnostic assessments, curriculum. All right, next we have our Perkins CTE Grants. This one, again, it reduced quite a bit, almost $20,000. So for payroll, we do set aside about $8,000, because we have the CTE Coordinator's stipend, and then if the teachers commit to having a CTSO, which is a group, and they take the kids to competition and everything, then we do provide a stipend to them. And then we have contracted services, a training that the teachers receive through CTE, the assessment licenses and fees, so any industry-based certifications, even the practice assessments with Pearson, this is where we get our funding for those licenses. We did not allocate any money for travel, so if our kids do make it like to a competition through CTSO, then we'll have to go back and look at maybe Title IV to be able to fund that. These are expenses for the CTE Grant. All right, next I have the Safe Cycle One Grant. So we started off with the Safety Standards Grant at first, and then schools were supposed to do an audit of everything that they've completed according to the Commissioner's Guidelines. If there was still things that needed to be completed, then we got more money, right? So the first one that we got was for $800,000. And I did get a script from Mr. Perez, because when I saw the expense report, I just see the vendors, right, but I don't really know exactly. So let me go over the money part, and then I'll read some of the projects that have been completed. And the majority of it could only be used for contracted services and supplies. Okay, so the next one, the Safety Cycle Two Grant was for $150,000. These are still in effect, but they're pretty absorbed already, because we've done a lot of work. Okay, so these are some of the, this is a summary that Mr. Perez sent me over. So we've installed the 3-millimeter safety film on all front doors and all front windows at every campus with graphics. We replaced front metal doors at Fabian's Elementary and upgraded all entrances with solid locking mechanisms. We replaced all exterior door locking hardware to align with the district-wide Grandmaster Key System, replaced all classroom hardware to align with the district-wide Grand, oh, I think I read that, sorry. And then replaced broken windows at FMS and FHS prior to applying the safety film. On access control, we've implemented electronic access control systems at all campuses to ensure that doors remain secure at all times. We've installed new perimeter fencing gates, wrought iron barriers, and privacy fences at all campuses. And then we've installed exterior door numbering across campuses to align with campus maps, assisting law enforcement and first responders in the emergency situations. And then last, the last component that we had on there was the emergency management and visitor safety. So we did add the Raptor Emergency Management Services across the whole district. The visitor management, when the parents come in and sign in, that they show, the execution of logging of safety drills on the specific app, the real-time communication during emergencies, and just for the fast notification and coordination with law enforcement and administration. Okay, so then next we have the Lasso Grant. Okay, so maybe a couple of board meetings before, we had the presentation with the math instructional framework. We did have a textbook adoption for math, right? So in order for us to roll out an adoption, we needed to have a planning process first before we do the implementation of the new math curriculum. So through the planning, we did get support, right? Because we don't, we didn't have the manpower at the time to carry it out on our own. So Region 19 did help us with the establishing of the framework. So we did have committee members, and we started off at Fabian's Middle School. The committee members did get a stipend for their additional work. And then we did pay Region 19 the technical assistance services, because in order for you to qualify for the grant, you had to select an approved vendor. And we went local, so that the money stays local. We did purchase calculators and then some software to help us be in compliance with the HB 1416, which was the tutoring hours for the kids who failed math star. So we were able to get some perks from it. And then the remote training, so now that we've done all the planning, we have our new math adoption for textbooks, now we want to implement it. So we are going to get some training within this next month, I think. Actually, with, by the end of the month, and we'll be using this grant to pay for that. Right, I put some of the expenses that we had on there. And this will, this one ends like what, next week, August 31st? All right, so we did apply through the safety, not the safety, I'm sorry, the grants.gov website, we did apply for the COPS School Violence Prevention Grant. The way it's, the narrative reads, it's mostly to reduce discipline problems. I used the fire that we had as our narrative to be able to write out some of the activities so that it could be aligned to that specific grant, right? Because we want to be able to reduce discipline, and then use some of the money that was spent on that as a way to say this was a burden to our community, to our school district, and this is why we need the funding. Okay, so we did put in, because there is a cash match, so the way it works is if you look at the thing on there, we requested $300,000, but it's kind of like our jet grant that we have to match. So it has a 75%, which will be the 225 that we will not pay back, but the $75,000 is a 25% that we will match. What we did is so that we can prove sustainability, because on there, that's the big thing. How are you going to sustain anything that you request for? Is that we put the school safety coordinator, right, because that's an existing position. So if they gave us money to pay the school safety coordinator, then we would get his salary to pay other things that we need. And then aside from that, we said cameras and then cameras and the labor installation is what we would use this money for. Okay, so we don't get notified for this grant until on or after September 1st. So we do get communication through email, so as soon as September 1st hits, and if I don't keep, if I don't hear from them, then I'll reach out. But it is a competitive grant, so it's a lot of school districts that apply. All right, so then I had a request for this one to be included. So the T-Class Grant was actually right after COVID, so just how us as families, we got stimulus funds, right? So then schools got stimulus funds through ESSR, not all of those, I'm sorry. Yeah, we got stimulus funds through ESSR, but also like the state agencies, like TA, they got their own funding. So what they did is they put out a survey to all school districts, and they asked us to reply where we would want to use additional funding for. One of the things that we applied for was the P-Tech expansion and dual credit expansion, right? Because we wanted to raise our CCMR scores, and we did not have a full P-Tech program at the time, so we qualified. So specifically, I think the request was for 9B, but I did include, I'm sorry, for 9C, but I did include 9B as well. So 9B, we met with high school teachers, and we offered them tuition reimbursement. We had two teachers who took advantage of it. They went to UTEP, the principal worked with them, and then they earned their master's degree. Then the next one, I had to, because they're from 2022, so I had to make the list, and I didn't have it handy, but I can explain what are some of the things that we fought for our P-Tech program, which is our diesel auto tech. So we had the tools, the, and when I say tools, it came in the toolbox as well, because it has to be a kit for the kids. And then just materials like motor oil, just wipes. And then we had the container, so we needed a place to store all these tools. So we did purchase a container, but before the container, we had to put cement to be, to be able to put the container on top. And by container, I mean, kind of looks like a tool shed, like a Morgan. And then the six-cylinder engine cutaway, the alignment rack, and the aligner. And then we had some other parts individual that the teacher ordered as well. I think one of the things that we weren't able to take advantage was the lighting stand. We did order some electric lighting stands for the teacher, but they didn't come in on time. All right. And that's it, this is an information-only presentation. I did go over a lot, but I mentioned to Mr. Alco that just how there was other workshops. If you need me to do something more in-depth, I can.
Any questions at this time?
Okay, well, thank you.
I have a question, ma'am. We had approved for two diesel engines last year, did they ever come in?
Just one, we only got one.
What happened to the other one?
No, the other one, they weren't, because I guess they put them together? Like they, they make them as you order, and they weren't going to come in before the end of the grant date. They gifted us some, but not the two that we had requested, so it was only one.
How about the hoist that was also ordered?
I don't know what that is, I'm sorry.
Like to lift the cars, remember that?
Yes, that is, is that the rotary?
I don't know.
Rack and aligner?
Thinking of the classroom, I believe it's there, it's installed, the red one that, that, actually, when I went there, they had, we were there the other day, and they had a truck up, hoisted up, so it is there. Yeah. Yeah, they do have a truck, right, yesterday, or the other day, they had a truck posted.
Okay. Thank you, ma'am.
Yes, sorry.
Those information only, no action needed. Next item on the agenda, review and approval of Fabian's ISD designation of Officer Resolution, presented by Ms. Sylvia Nunes.
Ms. Nunes, we're going to allow the veterans to request their landscaping.
Okay, following item on the agenda, approval of Fabian's Veterans Park Committee landscaping request. People participating, Veteran Park Committee members.
Good afternoon, Dr. Segovia, members of the board. My name is Mr. Ramirez, thank you for allowing us to be here tonight. We got a special request, but before we do that, we want to show you something that's going on in the park right now, so that you can see that we're trying to connect our petition to the beautification of what's going on in the park. Right now, this is what's going on right now, all right? We had a grant of $1.2 million that was donated to the First Veteran Park. We've been waiting for this for over nine years. Finally, it's coming through, and we feel very proud of this, all right? And it's going to happen. Right now, it's going on, we're, they're trying to clear the land and everything. So hopefully, we get it done by November or December. This is one of the projects that's going on. Also, in the, on the, in the park, we have, we have an anchor, a Navy anchor. We also have missiles, all right? And all this, all this that we have there, the missiles, the anchor, have been donated to us. We don't have any money, we're always asking for donations, all right? But the community has been very helpful to us. We are grateful for them, and we're getting people that are helping us out, all right? You can see, and those booklets right there, what the projects that are coming in in the future. There's a good, a lot of projects that are coming in, which is going to be beautiful. Our park is going to be beautiful. It's going to be one of the most beautiful veteran parks in the Lower Valley, okay? Once they established that we have our memorial coming, we're going to put some, a big sign coming in from Torneo in the exit, and another one coming from Clint, and says, "Look at our..." and another one coming from Clint and says, "Look at our memorial." Hopefully, that we can get people to come and visit Fabians and also help Fabians with, maybe they can stop and eat at a restaurant, you know, help their community also, alright? This is one of our goals. At the, at the end, we got, we got this trailer or truck that was donated to us from over at Kettlemann, okay? We brought it in, alright? We took it to the paint shop and also the paint shop was donated to us, okay? Now, this is what our petition tonight is. You, we have seen some rocks on the school, camp, camp school campus that maybe we can use to put around, around the truck, alright? This is what we're requesting. That if you have no need for those rocks that are over at Camp School, if you donate those rocks so we can have some less camping going in our park. As you can see, something is going to be built, that memorial is going to be very beautiful. It's going to be a nice looking park. And we want also this truck to keep on going with the verification of the park. And this, this is our special request. Oh yeah, this is the, the background is the swimming pool. This is the swimming pool, alright? And hopefully, we, I was, a trailer, and I'm a trailer, has been donated to us. And hopefully, we're going to have a Jeep somewhere sometime. This is my biggest, my biggest ambition right now, my biggest dream, to have an, a Jeep that can be donated to us, alright? So like I said, everything that we have is being donated to us. And tonight, we're asking board members, you see, we can have some of that rock so we can use for landscaping around our trucks and around our park.
Mr. Ramirez, I have a question. All this is going to be done?
Yes, sir.
All this, all these speakers?
Yes, sir, that's some of the projects that are coming in.
Projects that are coming in?
Right.
So some of these projects will have like a playground for the children, right?
Oh, yes, sir. Yes, sir. We, you can see that booklet, we also looking for a water splash where the kids are going to be going to, okay? That we're going to have some swings, you know, even for the, for the adults, where they can go do some exercises in the park. All those things are coming in, hopefully, in the near future, alright? But some of those rocks are hopefully that we can use for, for a landscaping around, around the park. And with your permission, if you guys know of anybody that's going to donate, want to donate us a Jeep, it doesn't have to be running, alright? All we need is something to display. Our park is very big, it's very long right now and it looks empty. So we want to put, there's many things we can display so we can have a, a nice looking park. Any questions?
No questions, Mr.?
I have a question, Dr. Segovia. Do we need permission from state or somewhere to give them as a gift?
No, sir, in the, in the policy CI legal, it does authorize you to donate the, this property and these rocks would be considered disreputable.
That's excess rock that was used for ponding areas, right?
Yes, sir.
We noticed that the rocks are being covered with sand. Pretty soon, those rocks are not going to be seen anymore because they're going to be covered with a blown sand.
Wait, thank you, Mr. Ramirez.
Thank you.
For everything that you're doing, no, no, I'm just saying thank you for all your hard work and what you're doing for Fabians, all of you veterans. And with the board's approval, I don't see why we cannot donate those rocks that are needed for your cosmetic deal with your truck. So with everybody, it's okay, I'm, I'm good to donating the rock, you'll be the motion. So do we have a motion?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion and a second by Mr. Spence. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor to donate the rocks? Aye. Motion passes, the rocks are yours.
Thank you very much. When can we go for that?
So, Mr. Ramirez, we will contact you tomorrow to coordinate the, I don't know, I don't see Mr. Barra here, is he here? Yeah, we'll, we'll have Mr. Barra coordinate with you to access the rocks.
Okay, thank you very much. And before I leave, I want to introduce Mr. Gonzalez and Mr. Rafael Ramirez, which are members of the, of the Fabians Veteran Park. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item on the agenda, review and approval of the Fabians ISD Board Policy FNCE Local Student Conduct, Personal Communication Devices, Electronic Devices, presented by Dr. Segovia.
Mr. Alco is going to take this one.
Good evening, Board President Estrada, Dr. Segovia, and members of the Fabians ISD School Board of Trustees. I'd like to begin just by showing you a clip that you might have seen on social media that, that our technology team put together. Ms. Sofia worked within coordination with a couple of students to put this together. So if we could please, Senor Garfias, can you roll the video?
Hey Wildcats, I'm Ramon.
My name's Alina.
Today, we're going to talk to you a bit about the new Texas state law and our new updated cell phone policies.
This new law prohibits the use of any non-instructional communication devices during the school day, such as phones, headphones, or smartwatches in classrooms from pre-K to 12.
Students are expected to turn off and put away all personal devices during school hours.
To avoid any consequences, avoid using or displaying phones, smartwatches, or earbuds throughout the instructional day.
For exceptions, you must have an individualized education plan, 504 plan, or medical directive that requires device use. All exceptions must be approved and documented.
Thank you for your cooperation and we look forward to seeing you this upcoming school year.
Thank you, Senor Garfias. So under new Texas Law House Bill 1481, the state now is enforcing a ban on any form of communication device during the school day. So as this legislation was being forwarded over to, to our LEAs, we got together as a district leadership team and as well with our campus leadership teams to develop a plan. And so part of that entailed, how are we going to roll out this communication? One was through social media. And then the principals also rolled out this information through their communication to their, to their parents, whether it was through, through parent, like open house or through a, through a, through a parent letter. And so as part of, as part of the, the, the communication that was shared is the state is now prohibiting any type of communication device. And what that entails is there in your, in your, in your one pager there, which is the cell phones, tablets, smartwatches, earbuds, headphones, smart glasses, or any type of digital communication device. And so the expectation, as far as our district, the way we are implementing this law is devices must be switched off, right? And stored away in backpacks or designated areas. And just like our students shared, any exceptions are for those students who are on our, on individualized education plan or in a 504 or approved medical need, right? And so as we were discussing this legislation and as it was coming out and as you all have in your, in your binders, right? We did meet as a, as a campus leadership and district leadership and developed these offenses, right? In terms of any consequences that could be, that our students could face, right? If, if their phones are confiscated, right? And all four of the offenses do have the device returned to them at the school, at the end of the school day, returned to a parent or a guardian at the end of the school day. But after, the first offense entails device being confiscated and then device returned to parent or guardian at the end of the school day. Second offense, device is confiscated, device is returned to parent or guardian at the end of the school day, and there is a $10 fine. And then the third offense, device is confiscated, student is given in school suspension for one day. Device is returned again at the end of the day, along with a $15 fine. And then on the fourth offense, it is, device is confiscated. There is a three-day now in-school suspension consequence given. Device is returned to parent or guardian, and then there is a $15 fine. And just in communication with our school principals, there hasn't really been any major, major issues happening with the cell phone. And I think part of it is because some of the norms and policies that our principals have established in prior years that have eliminated any need for a student to, to make, to create any problems with the cell phone. Any questions?
A question, Mr. Alco.
Yes, sir.
The fines are, are, like mandatory or, or is it up to the district to put a fine?
They are not.
In compliance with the fine?
They are not mandatory. They are, they are fines that we developed as a team here internally.
So in other words, just, the district is going to put a policy on, on this?
Yes.
That there's going to be a fine?
Yes, sir. And some of those policies already existed based on previous board policy that was in existence. So we try to just streamline those measures and that, that was a decision made here internally.
So, Mr. Alco, so far, I know it's early in the year, but I'm assuming we don't have any in the red, the fourth offense?
Not that I am aware of.
The orange?
Not that I am aware of, but there are principals in the room that could testify if they, if somebody did have one of those third offenses in, in the morning. But in communication, I think there hasn't been any major, major, major offenses.
Thank you.
Ms. Amador is looking at me with a smile. Do you have anybody at the third or fourth offense? If you could come to the podium? If you could come to the podium? I know that I do want to say as we wait for Ms. Amador to come to the podium to clarify what she's seeing. I know that I met, well, I don't know, I, I, I met with a group of parents. They were nominated by our campus principals. And so we started a platicas with the superintendent. And it was a successful meeting. One of the things that they mentioned, they're, they're happy with this, with this policy. So they, they did provide good feedback. Of course, these are adults, right? These are parents giving this feedback. I'm sure students feel different. So as soon as, if you're listening, this is a state mandate. So, but thank you for those of you that are following the rules. Most of you are compliant, and I know some of you are wondering why we have to have these things. I also wonder why we have speed limit, but we, but we do, I mean, unfortunately, right? Those are the rules that we're presented by. But so far, overall, I think we have a good turnout with this, with some exceptions at the high school, because high school is high school. Ms. Amador?
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Segovia, Board and Fabians community. We see issues, it's high school. Kids are having a hard time with it. I don't know if you all have seen the articles about addiction factors with cell phones, especially with our youth. So it was a little bit of a challenge at the beginning. We've had some discipline where we have taken away phones. We have moved up to charging parents, but parents are very much in support. I've not had one parent complain about having to pay the fee. I've actually had parents tell me, "Don't tell them I picked it up." Because they, they want them to learn the lesson that they're not going to have it out. In my 21 years of education, I'm going to let you know, I've seen a huge change what cell phones have done to attention spans. They went from something to text, you know, your parents that you were out for the day to it is a huge distracting factor. There is nothing more rewarding than seeing at lunchtime children actually talking to one another. It had gotten to at lunch, it was silence. Everybody's looking at their phone, nobody's having conversations. And right now, there's organic conversations. There's kids, you know, talking about the day and the class and the work. I see them playing games. It, it is a lovely thing to see. So we have had to charge fines. I, I think it does hit home a little bit harder sometimes in that way, it's coming from both ends, from us and from at home. And parents have been in support. I've not had one parent say, "This is ridiculous, we're not paying that." But I know neighboring districts, we've been doing that for years, that, you know, if there's a cellphone issue, we charge for it. This just kind of helps maintain attention. And seeing that, you know, scores and what have you have changed drastically also because our students are struggling. I think this is a push in the right direction for our students to have the attention and the learning they need in class.
I want to put a little bit of input to that. I mean, now with this new technology, with these phones addictive? I mean, children, students don't even go ride biking. They don't even go outside and play. There's, they're like stuck, their phones, they have them like slayed to the screen. They don't go outside and play football, you know, baseball or anything. I mean, there's no, there's no socializing between students.
Come by at lunch, it's lovely, they're talking. And I, I've really enjoyed seeing kids talk to one another.
I hope we can go back to that, you know, bike riding and all that. Seeing kids playing in the street and the playground. Thank you.
Thank you all.
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez. At this time, do we have any questions? There's an action needed on this. Do we have a motion to approve HB 1481 in our district?
Motion.
Second?
I'll second to you, Mr.
Okay, we have a motion by Mr.
So the administration does recommend approval of, of the cell phone policy presented with language provided by Tasri Policy Services.
Make a motion to approve?
Yes, I know it's been a motion.
Mr. Morales and a second by Rick Ornela. Sorry, I jumped in.
If we had technology, we could just press rewind.
Thank you, Mr. We haven't voted. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes, seventh. Next item on the agenda, review and approval of Fabians ISD designation of Officer Resolution, presented by Ms. Sylvia Nunes.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Estrada, Superintendent Dr. Segovia, Board Members and Community. My name is Lily Nunes and I am the Director of Finance. Presenting for your approval is the Resolution for Designation of Officer. What this entails is dealing with our tax rate. This is giving myself the designation to upload our approved tax rate to the Truth and Taxation website. It is now a requirement that it becomes an approval by you all so that one person can be the contact in getting this imported into that portal. At this time, I would like to recommend the Designation of Officer Resolution for approval as presented.
Motion. We have a motion?
Second.
We have a second? All those in favor say aye? Aye. Motion passes.
Motion by Mr. Spence, second by Mr.
No, Mr. Flores and Ornela. Next item on the agenda, approval of the No New Revenue Tax Rate and voter approval tax rate for 2025, presented by Ms. Nunes.
Regarding our tax rate and approval of no new tax rate, a notice of public meeting to discuss budget and proposed tax rate was published in the West Texas County Courier on June 12th in accordance with TEC 44.004B. And the agenda for the board meeting on June 25th included the item Public Hearing on Proposed Budget and Proposed Tax Rate for 2025, 2026 school year. The purpose of this agenda item is to adopt the tax rate for the 2025, 2026 school year and the no new tax rate as presented. To give you a background story, the no new tax rate is formally referred to as the effective tax rate. This would impose the same total taxes as last year. If applied to properties taxed both in, in both years, less improvements made to those properties. This does not account for impacts in state aid or recapture that would occur if the rate was adopted. This year's voter, voter-approved tax rate is as follows. Our no new, no new tax rate is at point 09, point 98 to 799 out of $100. Our MNO tax rate is coming in at point 7705. And our INS tax rate is coming in at point 3307, bringing our voter-approved tax rate at 1.1012. At this time, administration would like to recommend the new tax rate for your approval.
We have a motion? Mr. Morales, is a motion, have a second? Mr. Flores, second?
We now have a motion and a second. We now proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes seven. Next item on the agenda, Favens ISD and Clint ISD interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement presented by Ms. Nunez.
Um, this is our interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement presented to you for your approval, whereas the purpose of this agreement is to facilitate compliance with state procurement requirements, to relieve the burdens of the governmental purchasing function, and to realize the, uh, to realize the potential economies of scale available through cooperative purchasing, including administrative cost and saving to parties. What this would allow us to do is to have access to the vendors that are currently with Clint ISD. So they do their own procurement process, which is making sure that the vendors are in compliance with their pricing, their structure. This, uh, is having them do all the work for us for specific services. So having this agreement with Clint would enable us to use those vendors that are already approved by them and would save us the time and money to have to do the work in putting out an RFP or an RFQ for those purchases that we're willing to make. At this time, administration would recommend your approval for the interlocal cooperative purchasing agreement with Clint ISD as presented.
Do we have a motion at this time?
Make the motion.
Mr. Spence, motion, Mr. Cornella, second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Motion passes seven. Next item on the agenda, compensation update HB two, presented by Ms. Nunez.
Um, this item is, to give you again a history of the HB two. House Bill two passed during the eighty-ninth legislative session introduced new requirements impacting educator compensation, including adjustments to the previously approved salary scales with allowable incentive structures. The Human Resources and Finance Office revised our, uh, compensation plan to align with HB two provisions, address recruitment and retention needs, and maintain fiscal responsibility. Updating the compensation plan ensures compliance with HB two. The revised plan includes adjustments to the following pay scales, which would be teachers, librarians, counselors, and nurses. Approval of the plan affirms the district's commitment to fair and legally compliant compensation practices. We are also presenting for your approval the resolution to approve the salary scale update for teachers, counselors, librarians, and nurses in accordance with HB two requirements, whereas the Texas Legislature passed House Bill two mandating adjustments to educator compensation and requiring that a portion of the new state funding be directed toward increased compensation for classrooms teachers and other certified staff, whereas HB two requires school districts to increase compensation for certified classroom teachers, counselors, librarians, and registered nurses, using funds specifically allocated by the state for this purpose. Whereas Favens ISD is committed to ensuring compliance with HB two while maintaining a competitive compensation practice to support the recruitment and retention of high-quality instructional and support staff, whereas district administration has reviewed existing compensation structures and developed prob, uh, proposed updates for the salary scale for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year for the following positions, which is teachers, counselors, librarians, and registered nurses. Whereas the updated salary scale is to be applied retroactively to the beginning of the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six contract year in recognition of services rendered and comply with HB two funding provisions. This would be, um, issued out to the corresponding categories by no later than September thirtieth to ensure compliance with HB two requirements. Whereas the compensation increases are due, um, increases, I'm sorry, are due to be funded solely through state allocated funds provided under HB two and are not subject or nor funded through the local district budget. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Trustees at Favens ISD hereby approves the updated salary scale for teachers, counselors, librarians, and registered nurses for the twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six school year as presented by the superintendent in compliance with HB two, authorizes the retroactive application of approved salary scale to the start of twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six contract year for all eligible employees, affirms the salary increases are contingent upon the receipt of HB two designated state funds and are not funded through local operating budgets or general funds of the district, authorizes superintendent or designate to implement the approved salary scale communicate changes to affected employees, and process any required retroactive compensation as soon as administrate, administratively feasible. Districts the administration to monitor ongoing legislative guidance regarding HB two and brings any required adjustments back to the board for further consideration. At this time, administration, uh, request your approval of the HB two resolution and the update to our salary scales for, uh, for nurses, teachers, librarians, and counselors as presented.
Ms. Nunez, I have a question. To the chair, I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
This is the, uh, the staff retention allotment?
No, sir.
This is coming from there?
This is the TRA, Teacher Retention Allotment. The Support Staff Allotment is what is being used to be able to give a retention allotment to our zero to two teachers, to our nurses, librarians, and counselors.
And the, uh, the Support Staff Retention Allotment, what is this? This is, this is, this is including with the HB two, right?
No, there's, there's three, so there's a total of three separate pockets that the, that the state is giving us. First one is the TRA, the Teacher Retention Allotment, which is just straight for teachers that begin with the three, uh, years of experience and up. The second pocket is our SSA, which is your Support Staff Allotment. That allotment is derived from attendance. So depending on our average daily attendance, the state is giving you a certain amount per number. I believe it's about forty-five dollars. Our district is getting seventy-three thousand for that Support Staff Allotment, which is what is being used to have some type of retention allotment for our zero to two teachers, our nurses, librarians, and counselors.
So Ms. Nunez, just to be clear, all of these buckets of funds are coming from the HB two mandate, correct?
Correct.
Yes. Cause I did some research, I mean, it says that the Support Staff Retention Allotment provides a school system with an allotment of forty-five dollars for your student, right?
Correct.
And then it says, "School systems are required to spend allotment on increasing salaries for non-administrative staff," which is-
So you do have the discretion for non-administrative staff or to apply it to your zero to two, to everybody else that's in the teacher's pay scale, which would be our counselors, our librarians, and then on the separate pay scale would be our nurses.
So, so, I, I mean, my, my question is, why, why just put them? Why? Cause it says here, "Are required to spend the allotment on increasing salaries on non-administered staff," which, a non-administered staff is professionals, uh, food servers, you, you name it.
Right.
Everybody here, everybody in the district.
So our methodology behind it is because we are allowed to use it within the other certified positions that they're listing, is the amount that would be given if we were to distribute to our hourly employees would be at about a maybe forty-five dollar annual increase. If we do that, the thing with that is that once we increase our salary scale for hourly lease, that is something that we cannot come back and alter at any time. We would have to adopt it as a continuous basis.
I mean, I'm, I'm, I don't, I don't think this is fair. I mean, it says here, I mean, for non-administrative staff too, why are we just singling out certain amount of, of positions? And, uh, if it is what it is, you know, if you gotta, it's either one for all or none for all?
Well, we, we did consider that option. It was just the amount that, uh, the money is not as vast as we might did. It was what, seventy-three?
Seventy-three.
Seventy-three thousand that we needed to spread throughout. So the amount wouldn't have been a significant amount increase, and I realized anything helps. So then we decided, okay, what can we do with the funds that are still out? So what we're presenting to you is allowed, and so we decided to go this route with this method. That, that's the answer that we have for you. So, I mean-
You can't take it back, is I think what they're saying. You can't take it back. Once you give the hourly, uh, raises and the state stops paying it-
We have to keep paying.
We have to keep paying everybody. But not, not everything that they have in the HB, you, they stop. They stop getting paid.
Right.
They go back to their old salary. And if you, but you give it to hourly, that's what, mine, is that correct?
Yes, sir. You're, you're correct.
And just to give you, uh, another outlook of it, HB two is providing these increases, increases to salaries, but they're not providing school districts the funding to pay for the tax compensation side of it. So all of these raises that, that are getting are an additional cost to the district. This is not something that we're getting reimbursed for. So we have to cover as the employer those, those taxes. Just, um, based on the number of teachers we have with the allotment that our district is receiving, just for teachers, not accounting for your Support Staff Allotment, that's an additional cost to the district of about a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. That again, we were not counting on this expenditure. Now with the Support Staff Allotment, with these increases that we're using, it's an additional almost eleven thousand dollars that we're having to recapture for that as well. So this is not anything that is being funded completely by the state. This is something that we, is costing us, um, as well, in order to be able to give these salary increases. And again, this depends on state funding. So if state funding were to come back in next year, because they're saying that this will go on for two years, if they come back year three and say we're continuing, then that's still an additional cost that we have to cover for oncoming years, that we have to make sure that we're budgeting for.
Thank you. Thank you. And then, further questions? No? Okay, no questions. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Cornella, let's make a motion. Do we have a second? Mr. Morales, a second? Okay? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
No.
A poll say no?
Close.
Mr. Morales, a poll? Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Amador. Next item on the agenda, early resignation incentive, fiscal year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six, presented by Ms. Nunez.
Good evening again. I'm presenting to you today is our early resignation incentive for, uh, school year twenty twenty-five, twenty twenty-six. An early resignation notice incentive is a cash incentive to teachers who already intend to resign at the end of the school year in return for an early notice of resignation. Temporary or part-time employees are not eligible. This incentive is only for teachers. The Texas Education Code allows educators employed under probationary term or continuing contracts to provide notice of resignation without penalty at any time, um, up until forty-five days before the first day of instruction following the school year. The rationale behind this is that the early resignation notices will provide the administration with the opportunity to plan for staffing levels for the following school year. The proposed early resignation incentive amount for, uh, per employee is five thousand dollars for a maximum of twenty employees. The early resignation notice incentive pay serves the purpose of providing administration additional time to plan staffing for the twenty twenty-six, twenty twenty-seven school year and is not connected to any near certain involuntary, involuntary layoffs for employees. The administration recommends the approval of the early resignation incentive in the amount of five thousand dollars for the first twenty eligible employees as presented.
At this time, do we have any questions? I'll make the motion. We have no questions? We have a motion by Mr. Flores? Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by Mr. Morales? This time, we proceed to vote. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. A poll say no? Motion passes seven. Next item on the agenda, review and approval of Favens ISD purchases in excess of fifteen thousand, presented by Mr. Michael Perez, Jesus Barba, Mr. Manuel Aldaco, Ms. Nunez, Mr. Philip Frisco from USI.
Good evening, Board President, um, Dr. Segovia, Board members and community. The administration is seeking board approval for the renewal of technology equipment and services with associated costs exceeding fifteen thousand dollars. These renewals are part of a three and five-year contract, which is now entering its final year, and that information has been provided in your packet. The equipment and services covered by this renewal are critical components of our district's infrastructure. They play key role in maintaining connectivity, cybersecurity, and daily technological operation essentials to student learning and staff instruction. Approval of this renewal will ensure the uninterrupted support of our district's instructional technology systems and the continued delivery of high-quality education. The programs that we are, um, seeking for the renewal is the Trend Micro Deep Discovery Inspector Cybersecurity Appliance, which is in its last year, uh, financed by LEAP Capital Fundee in the amount of twenty-three thousand eight hundred and fifty. The second one is our Palo Alto Network Firewall and subscription, also from LEAP Capital Funding Finance Company, uh, in the amount of twenty-five thousand nine hundred ninety-three dollars and seventy-six cents. These were approved, uh, three and five years ago by the board, and we are on our last payment, and the contracts were provided in your packet.
Mr. Perez, could you-
Yes, sir.
Briefly explain what each one is or does for the district?
Yes. So the purpose of the Trend Micro Deep Discovery Platform, this appliance, um, focuses on advanced threat, um, detection. Its main job is to identify zero attack, zero-day attacks, targeted attacks, advanced persistent threats, and ransomware within organization. It also has a team on the backend that is always notifying of things that are happening on our network. And we don't have a security team in place, so this appliance always keeps us abreast of cybersecurity, and cybersecurity is always top of mind, and we don't wanna be, uh, vulnerable or attacked, so this appliance performs these daily duties, uh, by using these types of technologies. That's the Trend Micro appliance. The firewall, uh, acts as a security checkpoint between our internal network and our, uh, outside world, which is our internet, our cloud, and other networks that are outside. This firewall allows the good traffic to come in, but blocks any and intercepts any suspicious traffic coming in or out. So that's, uh, the purpose of our firewall as well. So every entity has to have some type of firewall, and any other type of additional appliance that we can use for cybersecurity, which is our Trend Micro, is something that I highly recommend for the district for daily operations, and you know how important we are on day-to-day, and we need to be safe on both ends.
And, um, you're recommending to renew with the same companies?
Um, so it's a three and five-year contract. It's the last year. So once we purchase this equipment, so next year we'll own it, and we'll only have to be paying service, support, and, uh, warranty on it.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. Any more questions?
No, Mr. Renal.
So the administration recommends the approval of our Trend Micro DDI and the Palo Alto Firewall purchase in the excess of fifteen thousand as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Mr. Cornella, make the motion. Do you have a second? Mr. Morales? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Perez.
Thank you.
Mr. Barba?
Two, I do each one. Good evening, President Estrada, Superintendent, Mr. Segovia, Dr. Segovia, Board members, committee members. My name is Jesus Barba, and I'm the Director of Media and Facilities here for the district. So in front of that, I have an updated, um, PowerPoint, uh, the one that you had received before. So first and foremost, uh, this is something that the district had never, or at least the department had never done prior to me being the director. We, we did a needs assessment. By that, we started looking at what the department needs in order to do those day-to-day, uh, the day-to-day work that they are supposed to, to ensure that our facilities are, uh, in the best shape possible. So again, when you look at this, we gather evidence, we analyze the evidence, we brainstorm any contributing factors, we get to a root cause, and then of course, we determine the next steps for improvement. Once we find that issue, we create a problem statement, we look at the root cause, and then there, we start asking the questions of why? Why is it that we have this particular problem statement? And we do that for a series of five times. So it's something that we did, and we did multiple things. So one of the things was that our, our problem statement was that the department is not able to complete daily tasks efficiently. Uh, and one of them is, for example, and I think that some of our principals can attest, there's a lot of sand, for example, at the elementary. That sand, if it's not scraped up by, uh, by manual tools, it, it takes a lot for them to do that, for our workers to do that. With the, uh, equipment that we are recommending for us to purchase, that would be a lot easier to do because they would have a sweeper. The, the department does not own a sweeper. We own a tractor, yet, uh, we don't own a skid steer, which is a lot smaller and would get into smaller areas as far- into smaller areas as far as, and increase the productivity. And so the root cause would be that the following tools are missing, and money has not been allocated. And then, of course, we put here, part of it would be the skid loader, the bucket, the sweeper, and the forklift. Our goal was that by June 2026, the department would acquire at least seventy percent of tools and equipment needed to complete all work necessary. And then the strategy would be that the proper amount of money to purchase the equipment will be placed in that particular budget. What we are asking for, and actually, what we had allocated was a total of about sixty thousand dollars. We did find the machine, the skid steer, which is, the skid steer loaders are indispensable in tackling various applications, ranging from earthmoving and landscaping to material handling and property maintenance. Those of you that are farmers know the difference between a tractor and the skid loader. A tractor does a lot of work, but there's also a lot of confined spaces that a tractor cannot get into, and therefore, the skid loader would make our job a lot easier. What that would cost would be forty-five thousand dollars. We did find a company that would do a payment plan to where our, this first year, we would have a ten thousand down, four thousand five hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty-nine cents, and then year one, we would pay six thousand five hundred dollars, and then after that, it would be seven thousand three hundred. There is right now a ten point seven, seventy-nine percent interest, with a possibility of it dropping to six percent if it is that we go ahead and agree to move forward with this. The price of the bucket that goes along with the skid steer would be two thousand two hundred fifty-three dollars. Then you have the sweeper. I think the sweeper is probably the most important, because of the amount of sand that we see, so that we can, we don't have to rent it, and we can sweep all that sand that you guys see as you enter several campuses, especially at the elementary, and we see that everywhere. So that could be done on a daily basis, so that we can go in and get that sweeper or get that sand out of all those corners and all those, everywhere that we see it, and we see that sand a lot. And then, like, for example, we have a project coming up at O'Donnell, which is that we don't have the equipment necessary to put everything within the playground, and when I can think of the term, the tire mulch, and because those are heavy. Right now, we don't have the equipment to lift that and be able to put it, so which would take our workers a lot longer without the proper equipment, or we would have to rent the equipment necessary. So I think that it would be a great investment. Our initial cost would be twenty-two thousand dollars, four hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-nine cents. So we move forward to, the administration recommends the approval of twenty-two thousand dollars, twenty-two thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-nine cents purchased, which is seven thousand four hundred ninety-three dollars and eighty-nine cents in excess of fifteen thousand as presented. You did see three quotes, and we are selecting Sourcewell, ground maintenance, CE, utility, and tractors.
Mr. Barba, I have a question.
Yes.
I know, right now, you're asking for a skid loader. There, we purchased a tractor that has a front-end loader and implements. Can you explain why that can be used? I know you said because you can't get to...
Because of the size.
There's implements, there's a blower that you could attach to the tractor to blow that sand in those corners. Have you looked into that?
That's something that we have not.
Okay. The reason being, because right now, you already have an implement, and I don't think it's feasible right now to invest forty-five thousand dollars on a skid steer.
And that wouldn't be the full amount this year?
Well, not only that, but right now, our priorities is getting a vehicle for our security department, because our security officers don't have a reliable...
That's also a different budget.
I understand, sir, but the thing is, right now, with our budget that we're having, and I think we need to look at other options that we have, instead of spending so much money on a skid steer, because right now, we really need to maybe see the implement that we attach to the tractor that we have. So, I don't know.
So, another thing, for example, this last week or this week, we were working on some areas at the middle school, to where the guys have to do it manually, and so it slows us down, and some of the things that we can do, with this equipment, we can get into the areas where we have the garden. So again, it just facilitates and expedites a lot of the work, when it's something that would really help out the department, especially when we have been reduced in staff.
And I totally understand, sir. The thing is, just the cost of it. I don't know if you've seen those backpacks, the skill backpacks with the blowers for getting to those...
And they have, and they have, and they have those.
So, I understand we have a lot of sand, but do we really, is this skid steer going to be in use, and we're going to justify the daily use of it for that amount of money?
When it's not just the...
Because we purchased a tractor that, I mean, is it in use? Couple of years ago.
The tractor, the tractor is, the tractor is being utilized. It was just used right here outside today.
So that's for moving those mulch or dirt that you're saying right now? So, why do we need another one? That's my question. Why do we need another implement with bucket? If we already have one, that's my question.
So maybe removing the bucket, but I think in order to use the sweeper and that forklift to be able to move, for example, the tire mulch, it would really facilitate that work, so that we can go ahead and attend to a lot of more projects.
Again, for the attachment or the...
Okay. That's something we can do, so it could be changed.
And a blower for that tractor.
And what about the sweeper?
Well, do we, when we blow that, do we actually need a sweeper? Is that's going to be blown out?
Based on the amount of sand, that is what, again, based on our needs assessment, is what we have, the workers, and this is something that everybody, it's not something that I, but we all met together, and they all said, this is the material that we need, or the equipment that we need in order to do our daily work. So it's not just something that I wrote on paper, but it's something that as a department, we decided that we needed in order to be much more efficient.
I have a question, Mr. Barba. Have you looked at this price versus the rental?
Well, if you look at what a rental is, for example, we're renting a crane that will cost us at least three thousand dollars, if not more, every time that we use it, or for every project.
But with this, this kind of machinery...
And we've rented, we've rented a sweeper before, but I think investing into this, and especially if it's going to be in payment, it's something that the department would end up using for many, many years and facilitating the work. I don't think it's, I really don't think it's a bad investment, especially when the department is the one that's asking for it. The work is within the department.
And what I'm thinking, I mean, is this going to be in use every single day, or is it going to be used once a month? Once a month, and then it's going to be parked?
Well, but there's a sweeper, there's the forklift, there's also the, you know, so the smaller bucket, there's a lot of stuff that needs to get done.
I have a question.
Yes.
Because in the past, we had asked for an inventory list of tools that maintenance has.
And I provided that to Dr. Segovia.
Yeah, we saw it, but it was very minimal. So maybe we could, we could use into buying other tools that we can actually use.
And again, that's very minimal, because when I got to the department, the guys didn't have any tools at all.
Yeah, exactly. So I would say, like, we can actually try to build that up and get our maintenance team or whatever to, like, take care of what we have and, yeah, like, you know, take care of it, not try to, or not misplace it, because I'm pretty sure in the past, there's been tools before, and for us to start out, or when you came in, that there was none, well then what the heck, you know?
And that's part of what we're doing. Just for example, we have an acknowledgement form to where every employee has signed that if they use it and they mess it up, they are responsible for it. So there's been a lot of processes and procedures that have been put in place, so that we ensure that we're taking care of the equipment. Right now, our big equipment and anything that is very costly is behind the cage where only I have a key.
Oh, well, that's good.
Because there's a lot of processes that I have had to put in place to ensure that everything is being taken care of. So we're not just purchasing to purchase, but, and there's processes being put in place so that, again, they don't grow legs and walk out.
And another thing, like you said, that to make sure that they take care of it, just to say, we do have other machines that are being used on the streets, and honestly, I've seen some that say, get that, like, they, they're driving it, boom, they hit it, I'm like, whoa, okay. We need to be careful.
And that's part of the reason why now, as they, they're going to use a big equipment, they're checking out with me, and then they've signed that form to where if something happens to them, or the repair, or the cost of replacing it, it's going to fall on the employees, so they're going to have to take care of it much more.
I got two questions or two things. One, if you were asked to, okay, so eliminate two other things on here, which two would you eliminate?
Well, we need the skid loader in order to implement some, like, for example, the sweeper, and then maybe the forklift, because that's something that we wouldn't be using on a daily basis.
And then, I don't know if my other board members would like to answer this, but you said, being farmers, you would know the difference.
Yes.
I'm not a farmer.
What I'm saying, those of you that are...
Mr. Spence, Mr. Flores, would you be able to...
I mean, I have a few questions, I was just letting you guys finish. Okay. What is it going to be used on? What kind of material is this going to be on? Pavement, rock, sand? What's it going to be? Parking lots? Because a skid steer will tear things up. If you've ever been on a skid steer, those wheels turn backwards.
Yes.
And it will make sand, it will make gravel, and it'll tear up our parking lots. If that's where you're wanting to sweep, that was one of my questions.
Okay.
Because a skid steer will tear up more than what it does. If it's on dirt, works good, and you'll wear out the tires. We'll be buying tires all the time.
All the time, replacing them.
If you're going to want to sweep on pavement, rock, stuff like that, that's one, one point.
So your recommendation would be to look at a sweeper that would be put on the tractor? Is that what you're saying?
Right, something more like that, because a skid steer, like I said, will tear up.
Okay.
I understand what you're saying, you want to get into small places. It does help. I have a loader and I have a skid steer both, and sometimes I use them both, but it does help in certain places. But, I mean, I mean, you're asking for top-of-the-line with cab, with everything else. I mean, it's, we can, we're all trying to save money in any way we can, right? I mean, I think that's where all the board's leaning towards. You can get forks for a loader. Your tractor, I know you can. You get a sweeper for your loader, if you had to. And a loader, a tractor will not mess up the pavement or, you know, our parking lots.
Okay.
If that's where you're wanting to sweep.
Okay.
That was my question, where you're wanting to sweep with it, was one of the main...
Well, most of it's going to be pavement.
And a skid steer will make more and tear up. It will actually, because, and you're saying in corners. If you ever had a skid steer to go into a corner, what's it going to do? It's going to want to make a donut. It's going to happen, and those wheels go, like I said, work backwards, and it'll just tear it up. And there you go, now what are we going to do? Now we're looking for parking lots. Now we're making, I'm just saying, I mean, a skid steer will tear up, and like I said, you'll go through tires.
That's knowledge speaking, right?
Yes, yes, believe me. I'm on my guys all the time. I tell them to stay off the roads. I say, drive on the side of the road on dirt, because if you turn on pavement, I mean, I'm buying tires, those things ain't cheap. That's my recommendation.
Just on cars alone.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Spence.
But there is a lot of implements for loaders, tractors, I mean, and I know that you guys bought a tractor not too long ago, and I'm like, there's a lot of, they have attachments for everything now.
Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Spence.
Mr. Flores?
I, I mean, I just, the same thing, I was just listening to everybody, but it's, you have a tractor, you have a loader on that tractor, you can, you know, I'm not trying to plug SNS welding, but you can go over there, build some forks for you to your liking, you know, that are just, and that kind of stuff, and put them on your loader. As far as, as far as a sweeper, you know, I don't, I don't know, I mean, a sweeper's nice, but I think a blower would do better. And you can get a three-point hitch blower, put on the back of that tractor that you have, and it's, they're very common, you know, they use them for pecans, you know, for the, for the harvesters and that kind of stuff. You know, it's just something you can, you can look at as well. And I would agree with Mr. Spence, that you're going top-of-the-line by getting something with a cab, because, you know, it's, I mean, it's nice. Of course, you want to have your, and I know you're looking out for your employees, you know, and I commend you for that, there's, you know, but, you know...
Thank you for that.
Yeah, but as, but as, you know, we run this business, because in a sense, it is a business, and, you know, you got to look for those things, and we know, you know, those of us that know how to operate that equipment, that, you know, you'll be fine without the, without the enclosed cab, because you're talking about the air conditioner, the glass, and I'm sure somebody's going to break the wood, the glass.
The door, they break doors all the time.
They break the doors, yeah. And it's just, and, you know, again, you know, I appreciate you sticking up for your, for your people, there's no doubt about that. I just, but I would agree with what everybody's saying on this board, and I think that it's just, it's a, it's a, it's a great wish list, and, but I would say, from the experience that we do have, is that, yeah, you can, you can get a lot of these things made, the forks for sure, you can get them made here in Fabens, or you can purchase them. I'm sure, you know, I mean, they're there, you could purchase them for that nice John Deere tractor that you guys have over there, and that's a small tractor, so it's, you know, if you can get into tight, you know, tight spaces and things like that, if you need to as well, you know, and, but again, I would agree, I think you said about the blower, I think, you know, I know there's backpack blowers, but there's also three-point hitch blowers that you can, you know, you can just blow, blow the sand out, and it might be a little more effective, and you're not, and honestly, you're, you're not taking up as much time, because those blowers are powerful.
There is a bigger blower than the one, the backpack.
Yeah, yeah, there's some that you can attach to the tractor and blow that sand back out in the desert, and maybe, you know, just an idea, I'm not telling you what to do, because it's not my role.
Well, no, it's...
It's not my role.
You're giving me a lesson.
No, but I, no, no, I'm just, I'm just telling you that maybe, maybe, you know, there's other, there's other options, as far as, you know, if you're getting a lot of blow sand, you know, there's, there's ways, you know, you can, you can create a, of course, I'm a, I'm a big believer in plants and trees and things like that, and so you can have windbreaks, you know, there's, there's certain trees or shrubs that act as a windbreak, and they're very, and they'll do very well in like the desert environment that we have. So it's just a suggestion, but again, again, I, yeah, but I think I would agree with everybody that's, what everybody's saying here, I think it's, you know...
It would be great, but, and the issue that we're in right now was, you're really...
And I think that was a good lesson for all of us, by Mr. Spence and Mr. Flores and Mr. Estrada.
Thank you, Mr. Nela.
Because now I know something else. Besides technical splits.
I've been reading all year.
You go to that auction that I set you up with, there's a lot of auctions out there that, that shows you different things, just to get knowledge, just to get on the internet and look and see. I learn from different implements, just looking at what they can sell. It might not be top-of-the-line John Deere or whatever else, but it gets you ideas of what, we can build that, or, you know, that can be made, or whatever, and it gives you ideas on a lot of that stuff, I just, just on the internet, you know? You can learn a lot, so much.
And I'm sure you could set up a meeting with Mr. Segovia, Mr. Aldaco, Liz Nunez, and these gentlemen, and just hear their advice. It's advice, they're not telling you what to do, but it's advice, it's to learn, to grow. And I think that would be one of the best things to do.
And like Mr. Flores said, not only for the three-point hitch, there's also for the front end, that you have lowers for that, so you won't have to have it in the back, like you could actually drive forward and...
They make sweepers for tractors too.
Yes. Okay.
And I can tell you, I can say that we'd be happy to help, help you search for this stuff. I have no problem, you know, through Dr. Segovia, of course, but, but, but just, just... There's, there's a lot of, lot of resources, even in this local area, here, here in the lower valley, I would say there's probably more resources in the upper valley and southern New Mexico, the Mesia Valley, just a lot of, a lot of people that, you know, they design these things, and they're really, it's really good equipment, so it's just something, but, you know, that's, whatever Dr. Segovia feels...
I think we can make a motion to table this item?
To postpone?
Just postpone?
We have a motion to postpone this item?
Yes.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion in a second to postpone this item? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Mr. Aldaco?
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Estrada, Dr. Segovia, a member of the school. On that original sheet that you already received with the McDonald's information in the back, you also have an inventory there, which are going to be the pending three items that I am going to be sharing information on and seeking approval for. And so, so the first one is item six point I point three, which is lecture learning system.
Thank you, ma'am. Testing, yes, all right.
So there is for, for Lexia Learning Systems, there are some subscriptions that we are seeking to purchase with your approval. The first is, uh, four hundred and sixty subscriptions that are, that are used for grade levels, uh, pre-K through fifth. And there are twenty subscriptions that are used to, uh, Lexia Power Up, that are, that we're seeking, that are used at secondary, middle school and high school. And so, uh, I did, uh, break down a bit of what Lexia Learning Systems entails. So if you look at that first column there, uh, Lexia Core Five Reading Subscription is for the earlier grades. And really what that platform does is it's utilized as a learning-to-read platform for our, for our, our students in the earlier grades. And really, it's, it's got, uh, five intentions. The first is to build strong reading foundations. When we're looking at phonological awareness, phonics, fluency, vocabulary and comprehension. The second one is personalizing instruction. So if you are a student logging into this platform, it will adapt to your student skill level, and the, and will also provide interventions into the platform. The third one is engage students in practice, right, when it comes to any type of, uh, reading literacy. The fourth is provide teachers with data, uh, providing mastery skills reports, and then also targeted areas for focus that the teacher could continue to practice or embed in their lessons with their kids. And then the fifth is bridging the school and home connection, which allows kids to access this platform at home for further practice. So the first piece there, that, that is, uh, the, 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 the Lexia Core Five Reading Subscription does entail the four hundred and sixty, uh, subscriptions there. Uh, with, uh, with campuses, uh, ODI and FES using them as, uh, not only for students, there are other students, but also students experiencing, uh, uh, with dyslexia. Alright, so those subscriptions are there. The Lexia Power Up Literacy Subscription is for grade six to twelve. That is more of a reading, uh, to learn platform. And the basis is, again, science of reading for sixth to twelfth grade, for filling in gaps and strengthening adolescent literacy skills. Decoding, right, word study, right, identifying words or breaking words apart, grammar and comprehension. And then the idea is building our, our, building up our below, uh, level readers. So that is mostly what the secondary pro- program platform entails. So with your approval, our administration is seeking to purchase, uh, the Lexia Learning Systems that is there in your binder for your review. I have a question. Yes, sir. How do you come up with, uh, or how did you also like this program? Instead of Ice Station, or Amira, or any other program? So in talking to some of our administration, I know that this was a program that was, uh, was brought forward by a previous assistant superintendent, especially after the COVID, and the whole idea behind the learning loss that our students were experiencing as they were transitioning back into the classroom. And so this program was used as a, uh, as, as, uh, a way for teachers to provide interventions and fill gaps in for our students. Okay, and I was assuming it's been successful. It's been successful, and now it's being utilized in the thirty-minute intervention slots that campuses have. Okay, thank you.
Any other questions?
So we already have this program?
Yes.
We already have it?
Yes.
So it's something like a renewal or?
Yes. I was trying to look at principals' faces, but, uh, everybody was looking away from me, so. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Miss Reese.
Subscriptions are.
Miss Reese, Mr. Reese wants to say something.
Ms. Reese, for the benefit of the community that's watching, can we go, come up to the podium so they could, they could hear? Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Uh, the reason we picked Lexia was because we are just like six students who are already using it, and the teachers were already aware of that and how to use it, uh, reports. Uh, after COVID, uh, we did, uh, experience a COVID learning loss, and when Ms. Gonzalez was here, she presented you with some data of how the students had gone down. And so when we received these students, we made the call to put everyone on Lexia, uh, because of the low reading scores that they were coming with after COVID. And then after last year, when we received third grade, uh, we continued, and this year we're going to put everyone that's at below the grade on Lexia.
Thank you.
Thank you. We have no further questions. Do we have a motion to approve?
Who made the motion?
Yeah, you made the recommendation prior to this discussion. We have a motion and a second by Mr. Spence and Mr. Morales. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Thank you. Ms. Elvia Nunez?
There's two more.
So the se- uh, the second item that I am seeking approval for purchase is, uh, six point I dot four, which is, uh, TECS, uh, oh, TECS RS. And so TECS RS is another platform that is, uh, the acronym is the Textual Essential Knowledge and Skills Resource System. So basically, the state adopts, uh, these standards that each grade level teacher must be teaching in their classroom, that they are, uh, that they use for their content areas. And so this platform, what it does, it really just turns state, state standards into teacher coherent, uh, curi- a curriculum for teaching. That's really the basis of how TECS RS works. Uh, it ensures one, alignment to state standards, so if I am a teacher, and I am a math teacher, I can log into my TECS RS. It'll provide me the TE that I'm expected to, uh, to teach. It, it provides me, uh, different components. It has a, a year and a glance. It allows me to see throughout the year, the pacing that my, uh, of, of areas, of, of, standards that I am expected to teach. It also gives me an instructional focus document, which breaks down, uh, which breaks down the study, the lesson for me, and gives me an opportunity to set.
Alright, testing, testing, okay? Testing. Yes, I think that, I'll just talk, was it okay if I? Testing, alright. Alright, so, uh, TECS RS, really what it is, it's, it'll, it's a, it's a curriculum for teachers. So it just aligns all the standards that a teacher's expected to teach, and it provides them an opportunity to dive into, uh, into different areas in the platform. Like I was sharing with you, it's got something called the Year at a Glance. It lays out the entire school year for me as a teacher, and it allows me to see what expectations I have, uh, that, that I have for my students. It allows me to set timeframes, it allows me to look at specificity, how do I go deep into that learning standard in order for my, my students to maximize their learning, right? So it is a tool, a tool that teachers, uh, throughout the state actually use. Uh, it is, it is in the areas of ELR, Math, Science and Social Studies. It does have, uh, everything from academic vocabulary to concepts across grade levels. So if I'm a fourth grade teacher, for example, teaching fractions, I could see how, what, what the third grade teachers are, how they go about teaching fractions, or their student expectations, so that I continue that, that teaching and continue to scale it up as kids progress in the grade levels. So that, what we are seeking, our administration is seeking the purchase of TECS RS for this upcoming school year. Again, something that is gonna be on a renewal.
Thank you, Mr. Dr. Do we have a motion to approve?
Make the motion. Second.
We have a motion and a second. Right, Mr. Flores and Mr. Estrada, make the second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes. Next item.
I got one more, I got one more. Alright, six dot I dot five, this is, uh, uh, House Bill Three. Is, requires all kinder to third grade teachers to, uh, to partake, and principals, special education. Teachers, teachers and principals are required to complete the Texas Reading Academies. That is out of House Bill number, uh, number three. And in our district, we do have four teachers, one instructional coach, and one administrator that is in need of completing certification for, uh, in order to be in compliance with, with, with HB three. And so those, uh, those individuals are, uh, are the ones who are gonna be participating in this upcoming academy. And so really, what the Texas, uh, Reading Academy, it's research-based, it's, uh, it's aligned to, uh, research that the state has done. It is a deep understanding of how children learn to read, what skills are involved, and which parts of the brain are responsible for reading development, and it's composed of twelve modules, right? So it is a fairly intense academy, right, where teachers are, do undergo pretty, a pretty rigorous amount of professional development to ensure that the science of teaching re- reading is correctly implemented into the classroom. And so down here, you do have a list of the twelve modules that, that are, that encompass the, the, the Reading Academy. First module is introduction, second one is science of teacher reading, third one is building literacy communities, fourth is using assessment data to inform instruction, fifth is oral language and vocabulary, sixth is phonological awareness, uh, seventh is alphabet knowledge and print concepts, next is decoding, encoding and word study, reading fluency, reading comprehension, written comprehension, and putting it all together at the end, tying it all, all, all ends. It is a fairly, like I said, it is a fairly intense academy, and in, uh, uh, in partnership with.
Region nineteen, they do provide, uh, these, these trainings. And so why I'm seeking approval for us to continue with this, uh, to continue with this memorandum of understanding with Region nineteen, in order for those teachers needing to comply with HB three, receive the training, uh, necessary for them to be, uh, uh, to receive their certificate in the science of teaching reading.
So we're gonna be paying twelve thousand?
It is three thousand per participant. That is the amount of. It's mandated, mandated by the state, right? Correct. They don't provide the funding. No, sir. As usual. Okay, and then, I know in the past, we have given our, 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 uh, employees that complete this a stipend. Are we still gonna do that? Yes, sir, there is a one thousand dollar stipend. I would like to give a big kudos to everybody that's done it, cause it is horrible. Well, I mean, you learn, right, but it's, it's very, it's, it's just hard. I haven't done it, so I'm happy. Yes. Kudos to everybody that has done it. Yes. It is pretty intense. It's mandated by the state. Yes, we, we have no option, we're mandated to do this.
Well, good luck. Good luck on your test.
Did you recommend the approval?
Yes, I am, uh, seeking recommendation, our administration seeks approval for our memorandum of, of understanding for the Texas Reading Academies.
Okay, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Estrada.
Thank you.
Good evening again. Um, at this time, I would like your approval to move, um, one of the items that's listed for your approval for purchase, which would be USI Insurance. I would like to invite Mr. Philip, um, to come and present to you all to explain thoroughly what our insurance policy covers, as well as our workers comp, and to assist with any questions you may have regarding our insurance policy.
Good evening, Board President, Dr. Segovia, fellow, fellow board members, I appreciate the time you've given me today. Um, we're presenting, uh, the PNC, which is property and casualty. That renewal is in a three-year agreement with PCAT. This will be the final year of that agreement. Um, you're looking at an increase of about two percent overall in that premium. Um, and that's due to basically about a two percent increase in the property values to account for inflation. Um, I'm not sure exactly what you have in front of you, but if you were to look at the property schedule, it's toward the back. Um, I think I have it on page thirty-two. Thirty-one and thirty-two. PCAT offers what's called, on your property, they offer what's called a blanket's, a blanket value. So all of the locations listed show different values, obviously, but if you're looking at the price per square foot, your average is about two hundred and twenty-five a square foot. If you guys think that you could rebuild any building for two hundred and twenty-five a square foot right now, um, that's just not happening, right? The average to rebuild, a high school is about five hundred and fifty, elementary schools and middle schools are a little bit less. But you guys have the blanket value, which is a total value of a hundred and thirteen million, oh, sorry, a hundred and thirty-one million, which provides that total limit. So you have a hundred and thirty-one million to rebuild one location or any number of buildings, rather than what's listed on that schedule. Other policies are basically, what's listed on that schedule is what you're gonna get. So you can kinda see that you're underinsured on almost all locations, but being with PCAT allows you to have a higher limit, which provides adequate coverage in case there was a catastrophic accident. Um, but the only time you're gonna get in any trouble is, you know, we don't have too many tornadoes, but if a tornado was to kinda sit over Fabens and destroy, you know, multiple buildings, that may be a problem. But, um, if you guys had a, a fire or something at one of the locations that's listed, you guys would have coverage up to the hundred and thirty-one million dollar limit. Is there any questions on that blanket versus schedule? That's kinda the most important thing when it comes to the property insurance. Um, your other coverages, equipment breakdown, general liability, auto liabilities, crime, cyber, educators legal, um, the workers comp. Those basically all remained about flat on the, on the renewals. Um, you had a little bit of increase, I think you removed one auto, added two, so you had a slight increase there on the premium. Um, your workers comp, you're gonna have a slight increase in the premium there, and that's basically due to a slight increase in the payrolls. You guys are with a company called Deep East Texas. You guys have had a locked rate with them for a while, so your rates can't increase. The only difference is gonna be the payrolls, so that's why you're gonna see a slight increase there. Um, I'm here to answer any questions you guys have about the insurance, but I can go on for hours if you'll let me. I don't think anybody wants. I did wanna bring up something, if you guys are thinking of a question, you guys wrote the cell phone policy. Um, since it's technically an illegal act, if somebody does confiscate a phone, and let's say they drop it and break it, and it's a fourteen-hundred-dollar iPhone, it's an illegal act, so you guys aren't, don't pay for it, your immunities will kick in. So accidents happen, right? And I'm sure somebody's gonna be pretty upset if that happens, but your immunities kick in, so do not pay for that cell phone. It's an illegal act, they should've brought it on campus or brought it out, so I wanted to bring it up.
I have a, I have a question, Mr. Westphal.
Yep.
It says vacant, buildings are excluded from property coverage unless otherwise expressed in writing from PCAT.
Correct. So the issues that we ran into with, uh, the Henry Tros Building, carriers aren't in the business of insuring vacant buildings anymore, and it's basically because of what happened at that location. Vagrants get in, you know, if you don't have heat or, or other, you know, amenities going in that building, people checking on it frequently, something's gonna happen, right? Somebody's gonna go in there, whether it be children to break in, have some fun, vagrants are maybe gonna stay in there. Fires happen, right? And so like, old electrical systems, things can happen. Carriers have taken so many losses over the past few years, that no carrier is basically ensuring vacant locations if it's passed about thirty days. Now, if you put things in the location, and you have maintenance go and check it, you know, weekly, you know, we can make a case for that. But leaving vacant locations, carriers just are not interested in covering that anymore. And that's kind of across the board, you're seeing that, doesn't matter if it's schools or, if, if it's large property, people are just not interested in covering vacant locations.
How about the old, old, uh, ODI? I mean, this, it's not even, it's not even used. The old Dono, the old, old Dono.
The old Dono. It's where the DAP is.
Yes.
Yes, yes, sir.
Yeah, there's a couple of like small anterway buildings that are still left vacant. Um, we're trying to find coverage for them, but I don't know if it's even worth the premium. Um, we're trying to find coverage for them, but I don't know if it's even worth the premium associated for those buildings, but most of your large locations, like if you were to look at the property schedule, that would be in there.
So it is covered.
Yeah, and that goes into the hundred and thirty-one million dollar limit, so you guys would have coverage up to that limit if there was a section of the building that was destroyed.
I just wanna make sure we're talking the same property. So you're talking about the old Donal?
Yes.
Where is this located, just for?
In front of the technology.
In front of the technology. Where? Fourth Street?
That's in front of the.
In front of the recollege was.
Yeah, that wasn't sure, yeah, that's in the list, it should be in the list.
Yeah.
Well, what you're talking about is CC Camp.
Right.
That one's not in, that's not in the list because that's, that's a vacant building.
Yeah.
And so that one is, is not covered at this time.
Correct.
Appraisal District still does charge though. Central Appraisal District still does charge though.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, I mean, if, if you guys, we've, we recommend if you guys aren't gonna do anything with it, you know, maybe it's cheaper to demolish it. So I mean, that's a board decision, but, yeah, um, if, if you guys were to start utilizing it again, just let us know, it will be added. You guys have automatic coverage, so, you know, within thirty days, please, let, let us know, but, you know, they're, they're, they incur a small premium charge, obviously, but, um, there will be coverage automatically if you decide to start using it again. And I did wanna let you know, you guys are in the middle of a three-year contract, but you guys are my client, not PCAT, so I did go out to the market and see if there's other options. Right now, you all saw a bigger increase last year over this year, to be, to be sure. It was about a fifteen percent property increase last year, the rate was increased. I still went out to the market and looked for a better option. Um, the market is getting better, so I anticipate that there'll be more options next year, but still, this year, PCAT was still the best option. Deep East Texas on the workers' comp, that's debatable on whether you could find a better premium. If you guys had any issues with the service associated with Deep East, like on a claim or something, maybe that's a reason to move, but having that locked-in rate, I would consider staying with them as long as you can because of that rate, and it's pretty low.
Mister, I have one more question, the, uh, building that, that was the old band hall, it's across the library, is that, is it covered? I mean, it's not even used.
The old administration building?
No, the band hall, remember the old band hall?
Yes, now we used to start, yes, it's in the list. Yes, sir. Thank you. Thank you.
No further questions?
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Flores.
Thank you.
Um, the administration at this time recommends, uh, recommends the approval for USI renewal and workers' comp renewal as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve?
I'm making a motion.
Mr. Flores makes a motion. Mr. Ramirez, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
At this time, I would like to recommend for your approval the renewal of our district software use, which is Frontline. This encompasses all of our business software for not only our finance department, but district-wide use. Um, and this is coming in at an annual cost of a hundred and fourteen thousand, one hundred and sixty-five dollars. Do you have any questions on what the software entails?
No questions, do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Motion by Mr. Renella, second by Mr. Spence. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes.
At this time, presented for your approval would be our child nutrition, um, department to include non-food items. This covers an area of different vendors, one of them being LaBott, another Segovias, GH Dairy, Brady, Southwestern Mill, Ivan Services, and First Degree. All of these vendors provide food and non-food services for our child nutrition department. LaBott is an estimated annual, uh, expense of five hundred and eighty-nine thousand, four hundred and thirty-seven dollars. Segovias is an annual expenditure of forty-five thousand dollars. GH Dairy, sixty-two thousand, five hundred dollars. Brady Industries, twenty-six thousand, five hundred dollars. Southwestern Mill, thirty-two thousand dollars. Ivan Services, fifteen thousand dollars, and First Degree at thirty-three thousand, five hundred. At this time, we request your approval for child nutrition service vendors for non, and, non-food and food services as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve? Mr. Morales has a motion, we have a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Renella.
I'm sorry, no motion?
Mr. Morales. Mr. Renella, second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes.
Thank you, I'm sorry. Um, last approval presented for you is the district copy paper use at an annual cost of seventeen thousand, five hundred. This would enable us to make the one-time annual purchase to have this copy paper available for the district to use on, throughout the year. And this would be a cost of seventeen thousand, five hundred.
Can we go digital?
Well, it's funny, did you say that we're trying to explore that option here at Central Office to go digital to reduce costs? So we're, we're actually started that, um, this month, and so we'll continue doing that to hopefully eventually go digital. There's some places we can't, you know, you're, you're looking at elementary schools, got any campus, you need paper, right? But we are trying to reduce costs by starting that process.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion.
Have a motion and a second. Mr. Renella and Mr. Morales, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you, Ms. Renella. Next item on the agenda, Opasal Center Appraisal District Board of Directors vacancy nominations. The Opasal Center Appraisal Office currently has two board members whose term will expire on December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-five. They are asking the taxing entities, they present to submit a resolution, anyone who wishes to run for the CAT Board of Directors. If anyone on our board wishes to be considered, we will need to nominate and vote. The board member's name is submitted and placed on the ballot. The board member will then need to campaign with the other entities on the list for votes. The winner is then selected by the majority of votes received. Ballots will be provided to the taxing entities before October thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The item will then be posted at the next available board meeting. Fabens ISD has five votes that they can assign to anyone on the ballot. So do we have any nomination?
I've already been there.
I don't know.
I can't.
I would love, I would love to get on this board, I'll tell you right now, I would love to, but I'm on too many boards. And I can't, you know, and I just can't find the time.
And me, I'm afraid of my wife, so no.
Because, because Central Appraisal District has, in my opinion, has done a disservice to, to our community, they, they blame us. They say that you guys set the tax rate, yeah, but you set the values. You, they continue to pu- put our values up, and we're just following state, uh, whatever. And, and, and it's just, you know, we had a good member, Ray Sepulveda, when he was, he was the chair of that, of that committee, and, and, uh, I don't know how he did it, but I, well, I know, cuz I know Ray was, he'd argue with anybody. And, uh, you know, he'd argue with the big shots there in town, and whatever, and he's like, I'm, you're not gonna, you're not gonna raise the rates on towns like Fabens, Torneo, uh, he used to pull for the Upper Valleys, well, Anthony Conotio, all, he's all these little valley towns, you're not gonna do it. And, you know, he, he'd fight him tooth and nail, and we are, you know, our taxes were, were decent or whatever. But, but, you know, these guys, they're just, I would love to get on this board, I'm telling you, I really would, but I just, I just can't anymore. I just can't, I don't have it in me and I don't have the time.
Jesse and Mr. Flores, you're afraid of the wife.
I'm a, I'm a volleyball dad. I just, it's, it's continuing, so I can't, uh, I probably, I probably end up, I probably end up missing meetings and things like that, so.
I still nominate you, Mr. Flores.
I won't accept your nomination, thank you. But, uh, maybe we can find somebody good at one of these, unless, Mr. Spence, are you?
Mr. Spence, no. About on time.
Anybody wanna be nominated? I'd be more than happy to advise you guys.
It's fun right now.
Yeah?
Yeah, it is.
Very interesting.
Right now, I'm too busy with the. With our association.
We have nobody, so no action on this item. Thank you. Okay, next item on the agenda, discussion and selection of Fabens ISD board town hall meeting date and possible topics presented by Dr. Segovia.
Good evening, President Estada, Board of Trustees, colleagues, and beautiful community. At this time, um, in the learning that we've done throughout some of the conferences we've been at, we have, um, acknowledged that there's a benefit to strengthen the Team of Aid's, uh, relationship with the community. So what we wanna do is, uh, start a, a town hall, and we could start with one. Um, and so you do have in your packet the presentation, and it's titled Town Hall Meeting, Strengthening Connections with Our Community. And so the purpose of the town hall meeting is to create an open, transparent forum for a two-way communication. That's where the Team of Aid, uh, can have and engage in communication with the, uh, community, where the community can ask you questions, and you could, uh, answer the questions, and you could also ask questions of the community, right? So you do, you are engaging in a two-way conversation in, uh, any given, uh, topic that the Team of Aid desires to discuss, right? Uh, provide parents and community members a direct channel to share ideas and feedback. Um, also to foster trust and collaboration between the school district and all its stakeholders, and then allow the Team of Aid to listen, learn, and respond effectively to any of the community needs in regards to our, uh, school district. Why the Team of Aid? Uh, well, the Team of Aid represents a diverse, diverse perspective. As you've seen in this meeting, there's sometimes that, uh, there might be a, a difference of opinion, we share them, and there's an up and down vote at the end, right? And so that's, uh, that's important in our board. Uh, bring together board members, parents, and district leaders can, can commit it to partnership, because we do wanna continue to strengthen that partnership with our community and our parents, and then it ensures a voice, that all voices are heard and considered, right? Uh, the next slide here is to, benefits to the community. Well, the community gets to access the Board of Trustees in a welcoming, informal setting, right? And so a board meeting is very formal, right? So, uh, even if you have, uh, open forum, there's rules and guidelines that, uh, apply, and there's restrictions and constraints that the board has in terms of answering any of those questions that the board, the community may have. And so this gives you an opportunity to engage in an informal, uh, setting. Uh, increased understanding of district challenges, so there's an opportunity for the, the Team of Aid to discuss some of the challenges that we are facing, right? Cuz we, 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 while we're working, striving to, uh, improving our district, uh, as we go, we, we do have challenges that we have to overcome. And then, and encouragement, uh, of shared responsibility for student success, because we know that, uh, the Team of Aid, the school district, uh, through their governance and the district through the leadership, our, and our, and our parents in partnership, uh, are all responsible of the education of our children. The benefits to the district, of course, it will build stronger, uh, build stronger relationships and trust with families and community members. It'll help identify issues early and collaboratively to find solutions, because we don't see everything, right? We, 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 we work towards, uh, ensuring that everything is working, uh, as best as possible, but sometimes we may miss some things, right? So, uh, this allows for that opportunity to find solutions if somebody else identifies those, those issues. It supports transparency and accountability in district governance, right? And it also enhances, uh, community engagement, leading to more effective policies and programs. And so what I'm asking the Team of Aid, uh, to consider is, uh, to schedule, uh, a town hall meeting that, that once we have a schedule, I have some dates that I could propose, um, that we could then begin to, um, promote to our entire community so they can join us. And then we put, we could prepare discussion topics and materials based on board input, right? So in the next page, the, the last page of the, of this presentation, you'll see some topics there that, uh, that we could select, then, we're not limited to those, those are just ideas. This, again, will encourage active participation, participation in respectful dialogue, and also, um, it'll be used to gather feedback to inform board decisions and district planning, right, as we move forward. Um, if you do look at the last page, there's some ideas there that, uh, we found that could be possible topics for a town hall. Um, some of the things that, uh, with, uh, with the cabinet team, we discussed, some, some that we could, uh, discuss, um, school safety, it's some, it's a hot topic. Uh, attendance, it's important cuz we have a big drive on attendance, uh, going on right now. Of course, the budget, the budget is always, uh, some of concern, and some of the constraints and, and deficits that we have there. The role of the board, the grievance process, and of course, academic performance, because we are a school district. So those are topics that, that we thought about, but there's others there in that list, or there's others that you might be thinking about. So there's different ways that we could do this. We can have one topic that different board members, or all, all the Team of Aid will discuss as we rotate with the community, or each board member can have a topic, uh, that when you have, uh, a rotating group of, of individuals, you could discuss, right? So we could still, uh, work through those details, um, and so this is for, for us to consider. Some of the dates that we thought were, uh, could work, uh, and would give us time to organize, cuz, cuz this would be, uh, we would, we would need to meet again to discuss this, to, to begin to finalize specialty topics. Uh, October thirteenth would be one that we looked at our calendar, it's something that, that will be feasible. October twenty-second is another date, November twelfth, and then if nothing else, we could do December third, if we can't get it earlier, right? And so I'd like, I'd like to see any of those dates work, so that we can begin to promote, and then we could discuss topics, uh, as we go, as we prepare. And at this point, I'll take any questions.
What was the first date, I'm sorry?
The, the first, the first date was October thirteenth.
That's right after, uh, our break, right?
Yes, sir. And then the next one is October twenty-second, November twelfth, which is also right after, uh, or right before holiday, uh, I think it's Veterans Day, and then December third.
We gotta give you dates tonight?
If, if at all possible, that would, we could begin to promote, uh, if you could just take out your calendars, see if any of these we could work through, to see if any of these work. If none of these work, we could, uh, I could bring back some, uh, some other days later.
I just don't have my calendar, I'm still old-fashioned, I use a paper calendar. I, I have some stuff here, but I just can't.
I mean, I would say probably November, November twelfth would work, since it's a gathering season, Thanksgiving kinda thing. That would, like, before the, the thing?
November?
I see October.
It is really whenever everyone's available, right, to, to ensure that the entire Team of Aid is present, so that we could all be involved. You're picking pick-ons? You're picking pick-ons in November?
No. Uh, November, November twelfth or December third would be good for me. October, I'm really busy.
Okay, so, I, I, I'm open.
November, okay. November twelfth or December third, either one of those.
Okay. Which, which one would be?
Maybe, like I said, I can go either one, so done.
Okay. December third? December third? December the third?
December third?
November, December, it doesn't matter. I'm open as well, whoever, whoever has the busy schedules and stuff, whatever works for you all.
Right.
So we can, yeah.
And what, what time, if we choose on those dates, what time would it be?
Six, six o'clock.
And six p.m.
Probably at then, just to make sure we have enough space to do rotations and have discussions, so I did that. So we do, that, that's why I want the date, so that we could begin to promote it, and so that we get the community excited about it, so we could, uh, have them join us.
I know, I look at it so Wednesday, cuz I think we're doing basketball, no, basketball? Federal, they play Tuesdays and Fridays.
So is November twelfth the date, or the third December, sounds like it would not go to those two?
The third.
The third, December? Y tragan tamales, bring some tamales, and, uh, we can make it.
The, the community for us?
Everybody bring a, bring a dish.
Turkey. We could promote something like that, turkey.
No, yeah, December would work.
So December third, and that also will give Mr. Flores time to look at his schedule. It's, it's far enough to, in, in time, so we could begin to, to do the work, uh, on this. I think this is a, a great opportunity to engage with our community. I do feel that, um, our parents do have questions, and this would be a great opportunity to have access to our board members. And then you, I mean, you, obviously, you, you have access to the community, but this is a, it's a formal, informal way to talk about topics that are pertinent. We don't have to decide on topic right now, like I said, I, there's a list of, of these, you can send me the topics. can send me the topics that you think are interested, and if all of you send me a similar topic, then we found the topic, right? But if it's different, various, we could figure it out as we go, so logistics shouldn't be a problem. But I do feel that this will be important. It'll be similar, I'm doing something a little smaller scale with a parent advisory group, and it was successful, and the parents appreciated it. So I know that our parents in our community will appreciate this as well. So thank you always for your support, and thank you for agreeing to this town hall, and to agree to a date.
I think the first one's gonna set it, you know, set what they want, the topics, you know? Because you don't know where it's gonna come from, either side.
What could I, I could also do is send out a survey to our parents and community to see what topics they might be interested in, and we could also formalize that. We still, we have a little bit of time to discuss topics.
And are we gonna have somebody in finance, for the budget and finance questions and all that?
So it depends on the topics here, so the idea here is, once we have topics, the board members will have a table with somebody from central office also supporting, because we'll also be taking notes of the discussion, because we want to make sure that we capture that feedback, so that we begin to work on some of the topics that, some of the possible solutions or things that come up, right? So you will have, it'll be the Team of Aid and somebody from central office assisting the board member.
Is it gonna be English and Spanish, or just English?
Well, in our bilingual community, I know in my meeting, I just went bilingual, and we met bilingually. If we want to do one exclusively in English, we can, and we would need to schedule another date for Spanish if we wanted to do that too.
Or you can translate for me.
I think together.
He spoke better Spanish in high school than I already.
Very good. So I think if we do that date, we do bilingual, parents are very understanding, most parents do speak Spanish, some may not, but it works out so that, it worked out for the meeting that I had, and I thought it was successful, so we'll make it work.
All right.
Is it almost like the rules and procedures or anything, what we can talk about? I mean, like I know personnel you can't talk about, you can't, I mean, that's gonna be the same thing, right?
Right.
There are things we can't talk about.
Correct, it won't be anything regarding personnel, those are topics that we can't address.
You know, people will bring it up, we just can't.
Right, for those, we won't, what we could, what we'll do is set the, once we start the town hall, we'll set the norms, right? Because we also need to understand there's some norms, how we're gonna talk to each other. There might be some hot topics that might bring some passion in individuals, there's not a problem with that, but we're gonna listen respectfully, and we're gonna answer respectfully to each other, right? And so we'll set those norms, and then we'll also discuss some of the things that we cannot discuss, personnel will be something that we couldn't. But for the most part, most topics should be pretty open.
We'll give it a try.
It'll be a good attempt, I think, I do believe it's gonna be successful, and so we'll start soon as tomorrow to discuss at some point, because tomorrow we have a lot of meetings, but we'll see at what point we can meet. Where's Ms. Sofia? She will be the campaign manager for this, so that we can begin to promote it. And I do believe, I'll probably send that survey to the community to get some topics from them.
Have emergency exit.
Are we gonna have an emergency exit?
Emergency exit, so we can run.
If it gets too bad.
No tomatoes.
We will, we will make sure that no tomatoes are allowed to come in, and so we will also have security, we will set the tone.
So SORs, please.
So school security's a hot topic, we might want to have that topic discussed, so but we'll figure it out. We'll have Mr. Alaco, who is our bodyguard, protect us.
Bring spirit.
Of course, spirit is always gonna be part of these meetings as well.
Yeah, it's a spirit.
I promote you to town hall.
All right.
No, it's good.
If there's no other questions, thank you all for your support. Muchas gracias.
Thank you.
Motion.
We have a motion and a second. Second, by Mr. Okay, all those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes. Next item on the agenda, discussion and possible action on job postings for Fagments ISD substitute counselors and custodians.
Good evening, Board President, Mr. Estada, Superintendent Dr. Segovia, Board of Trustees and Community. My name is Aide Porlanco, Director of Human Resources, and this evening I do want to discuss and maybe possible action for job posting regarding substitute custodians and substitute counselors. So the substitute counselor came as a need. We had a vacancy at one of the schools, and we did have a little bit of challenges in filling that position. So as administration, we analyzed it and are proposing that we open a position for substitute counselors. And again, this is not, we wouldn't be paying this position unless we need it. It would work the same way that substitute teachers work, we would have a pool, and the event that we do need that support for one of the campuses, we would be able to call in that counselor, and they would substitute in, in the event of the need of a counselor for a campus. And then we are also looking at substitute custodians. This would be in the cases where we've had custodians out for a number amount of days, maybe they're on FMLA, or illness, something to that effect. It would allow us to have a pool of custodians that would be available on call for us. This would eliminate the need for us to pay overtime to our current custodians, and therefore alleviate some of the strains in the budget when it came to those instances. Do you guys have any questions?
This is not, this is not the day-to-day.
No, sir.
Like a substitute teacher.
No, they would be substitutes, they function the same, but they're called as needed, same thing as.
But only if you have a custodian that is gonna be out for a certain amount of time.
Yes, and we are looking at custodians that are out maybe possibly more than three days, because if they're out a day, you know, other custodians can pick up some of that, but beyond three days, it does become a strain on our current custodians.
And for counseling, they don't have to have any credentials?
No, they would have to have the credentials, they would have to meet the guidelines through TEA.
For the council?
Yes, yes, they would have to have the correct certification as a counselor. Oh, no.
I was about to apply.
Very good question.
Call me.
I'll teach those kids.
We have ODI.
Do you need one for ODI?
Well, we were looking for one at this current time, we do have for applicants, they are looking at interviewing this week, but there was a need there, and that's what prompted us as administration to start looking at this, that if we would have had a substitute counselor, they wouldn't have had, the need would have been there, but the coverage would have happened during this time.
So counselors, you couldn't move a counselor from the other?
Well, they're using their current counselors how they were needed, and that's the reason that we want a substitute counselor.
And so to survive at ODI, because we do have, we did have needs at the campus, where we had a missing counselor, as we have a missing counselor, we have our special ed counselor helping, but he also has a caseload, and so he also needs to have, he's taking care of some emergencies at the ODI, but he also needs to care of his caseload. So we were thinking, because originally we had no candidates for counseling, like nobody applied, we said, well, we might need to open up this counseling, substitute counselor position, to cover the needs at ODI. We have four candidates, hopefully there's a strong candidate there. I know Ms. Riz knows that if she doesn't find anybody there, then we will proceed with a substitute counselor.
We'll call Ms. Rizel, Dr. Rizel.
Dr. Rizel. We will contact it.
I know this is not on the agenda, but have you ever thought about a substitute nurse?
That's another possibility, and I know at some point we did explore it. I think we've had a bigger need for the counselor and the substitute custodians at this point, that's something we can bring up at another time.
Yeah, because it would only be as needed, so.
Ready? No further questions? Can you make the recommendation, or do we?
At this time, the administration recommends the opening of the substitute counselor and substitute custodians as presented.
Do we have a motion to approve?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. All those in favor say aye. Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Thank you. At this time, we'll be going to close session. Per Texas Government Code 551-074, for Town Administration and Human Resources Directors' Update, Superintendent Evaluation Update, at 9:27. At this time, we'll be going to close session per Texas Government Code 551-074 for Tel, nutrition and human resources director's update superintendent evaluation update at nine twenty-seven.
Nine twenty-six.
At this time we reconvene to open session for possible action announcement. Time to reconvene is nine fifty six. Okay, at this time we have a motion to move director of HR and child nutrition to pay grade five. Motion, second. Motion and a second. Mr. Morales and Mr. Morales second. All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed.
Opposed, say no.
Opposed.
So six one.
Six one. Mr. Spanish opposed. Second motion to use the superintendent evaluation template as discussed. All those opposed say no.
Motion to adjourn.
There's no further business, but I have a motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. Okay, all those in favor say aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned at nine fifty eight. Hurry up.